Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers. District 10, at-large counsel, Sandra Davis, clerk of counsel, and city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the January 28th council meeting. We appreciate you all joining us. We will begin today as we always do, and that is by invoking God's presence on these proceedings. I'd like to ask my friend Pastor Jimmy Elder for First Baptist Church to come to the podium. And Jimmy, if you would, if you'd push that light, I'll get the, I'll get your microphone turned on. Yes, sir, if I can just remember to do my part. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. You know, Calvin Smyrie's portrait was unveiled today at the, at the state capitol. And in a couple of days, we're going to remember the death of Richard Smith one year ago. We live in an incredible community, a community of great leaders and a community of, of a lot of good. And we're looking to the Lord to help us be good stewards of it. Will you bow with me as we pray? Lord, thank you for the gift of living in a place like Columbus, Georgia. Thank you for all of these who represent us, and I pray for their wisdom. I pray for your grace in their lives and your strength for each day. Help us as citizens and as a community to be good stewards of all that you've given to us and always recognize that you're the giver of all these good and perfect gifts. We pray that as we look at this community and think about her future, that we may always look to you and look to the needs of those who have needs and look to the opportunities that you place before us, that we may use all that you've given us to the very best. May we never take anything for granted, and may your blessings always be upon this place. In your precious name, we offer our prayer in love and gratitude. Amen.
Jimmy, thank you, sir. We appreciate you so much for everything that you do within Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you, my friend.
Yes, sir. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first piece of business. We have a motion, a second to approve the minutes from the January 7th council meeting. Are there any changes or edits that anybody would like to make? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And before we launch into the agenda, just wanted to lift up a group of people that have really gone unseen but done a tremendous job over the last week with the dusting of winter snow that we got in our community, which tends to shut us down for three or four days. Our government employees kept right on working. Our public works people were preparing weeks in advance to make sure that there was sand and there was manpower and that our forestry division was ready in case trees were down and they were prepared for trying to deal with every eventuality. Our law enforcement, our first responders were there to pull cars out of ditches. Thank goodness, nobody was seriously injured. But these folks just do their work and then get right back in their car and go do another job somewhere else. They were getting up every morning at about 6:00 to try to make sure that the bridges were as clear as they could get them so that we could try to get to work. So I would just urge you, if you see these individuals, thank them. They don't get a lot of thanks, but they do one heck of an incredible job. We are going to pull up on the agenda one item. Most of you probably remember or have heard about House Bill 581. It's a floating property tax freeze. And every county and every school district has to make a decision on whether or not to participate or to opt out. And so we've got our tax assessor, Suzanne Whedon House, that is going to make a presentation and we're gonna, we're doing this now because I think it's important for the public to understand from a transparency standpoint what the options are as we move forward. Tax assessor?
Good evening. Thank you so much for, for having me and for pulling me up on the agenda. I do appreciate that. So just to refresh, House Bill 581 has a lot of different tax components to it, but one of the items was on the ballot on the 4th of November, and that was the portion of the bill that included a floating homestead. And it overwhelmingly passed here in the state of Georgia, I think by seventy some odd percent, something to that effect. But that included an opt-out option for counties and school boards and, and basically all taxing authorities, so some cities as well. And with the passing of that referendum that was on the ballot in November, it became law as of 1 January 2025, and that opened the opt-out period, which started 1 January 2025 and has to be completed by March 1st of 2025 if that is the option. So what it did was, amongst other things, it created a floating homestead. And what that means is it, it says that there will be a base year value, and then that value can be adjusted by an inflationary index, both up or down. For those counties that have an existing homestead, a floating homestead or a frozen homestead in our case, the taxpayer receives whichever one is the most beneficial. This exemption is in addition to, not in lieu of, the non-floating exemptions. And the non-floating exemption is the amount that gets deducted from the assessed value. The state amount is $2,000 for a standard homestead. Ours is $13,500 for a standard homestead, or $21,000 for a, for an elderly exemption. So those are the non-floating exemptions. So this is in addition to that. Counties can opt out of this. The opt-out does require that it be advertised and three public hearings be held, and that all of that is completed by the 1st of March. The thing to remember is that if one taxing authority opts out, that does not require another taxing authority to opt out. So you could have the city not opt out, the school board opt out. If the floating homestead is the most beneficial for somebody, then that's what they would get on the city side, but on the school board side, they would get the frozen homestead. So that would just be what was applied to their individual millage rates. It has the potential to become very, very complex very, very quickly, particularly when you consider the fact that our homestead tops out at two acres and there is no acreage limit on this particular homestead. So while we have what we call H-accounts, which are properties that exceed two acres that are homesteaded, they get the freeze on the two acres, and then anything over that is subject to fair market. Under this, they would potentially have the floating homestead for the full acreage. It's, like I said, it can get very complicated very, very quickly. Currently, it is estimated that 85 to 90% of the school districts will opt out, which means that only 20 to 26 school districts are going to stay in this floating homestead. The rest, 154 to 160 school boards out of the 180 are planning on opting out of this. For counties and other municipalities, right now anecdotal evidence provided by the GAAO and the ACCG indicates about 50% of counties and cities are planning on opting out of this. So what's the difference between our frozen value and a base year value? So our frozen value is the value that was on the property at the time that the homestead was placed on it. That gets frozen when you apply for your homestead, and that's where it stays. The base year value, for those who are currently homesteaded, would be the assessed value of their property for tax year 2024. That would be their base year value. And then that value would be subject to an inflationary index or a deflationary, depending on what the market is doing at the time, whether it goes up or goes down. It is not, the base year value is not based on their frozen value. So if they put their homestead on in 1982, their base year value is not based on that value in 1982. It is based on the value, the fair market value of their property as of December 31st of 2024. So if they put their homestead on in 1982, that is not the basis for their floating homestead. Their basis for their floating homestead is whatever their fair market value was at the end of 2024. Okay, tax year 2024, which was already established, pill periods already run, all of that. So that would be the, that would be the basis. So I have some examples here to kind of show you what this does. And the first example is somebody with a prior homestead. So this is, we've made some assumptions on this. The assumption is that this homestead was placed on the property in 2019, and at the time, it had a value of $280,000, fair market value. Fair market value, for the first year of this, which would be 2025, we're saying is $400,000. The local value on that initial $280,000, that assessed value was $112,000 in 19, in 2019. The base value would be based on the value that it was in 2024, which is that $400,000, so the base value would be $160,000. So if we don't opt out, it's, the local value is of course going to, going to be, going to apply. And if we do opt out, the local value is still going to apply. Our frozen value would still apply. It's the most beneficial to the taxpayer. So we could rock on for a couple of years here, and we're seeing an increase and an increase, and you'll notice that our local value is still the most beneficial to the taxpayer. And so anybody that's been homesteaded for any length of time, you're pretty much going to find that your local value is going to be the most beneficial. But what happens to those folks who are newly homesteaded? So say it's a new homestead, and we're assuming the same amount of growth, the same amount of, of deflation for the last couple of years of this. So new homestead, same, same scenario, $400,000 home, local value of 160, base value of 160. So this is somebody who acquired their house, it was 100, $400,000, it was $160,000 assessed value, base value, same thing. That was the value in 2024. So the next year, you can see, the local value still is what's the benefit to them. Same thing for the next year. Same thing for that, the fourth year. When you notice, we have an inflation rate that's gone down. We're, we're into a deflationary situation here. By the following year of that, where we still have a deflationary rate, you'll notice that that base value now becomes the more valuable to the taxpayer. So that is where the floating homestead becomes more valuable. So they would then go from the frozen homestead to the floating homestead. Think about what happened in 2009 when the market tanked. We ended up with a moratorium on tax reductions, on value reductions, set by the state because of the rapidly decreasing values. Now, that didn't affect the folks here in Muskogee County because we have our freeze. And a freeze is a freeze is a freeze. Once it's locked in place, that's what it is. This floating homestead confuses the issue. So now we have the ability to go up or down, and if it drops below the freeze, then that value goes down. It does not ever reset that frozen value. That frozen value is the frozen value. So if this, if the, if the base value drops below that, that does not become their new frozen value. So if it goes back up, then it's going to go back up again. So they will no longer be locked in. It will fluctuate with what the market is doing. What happens if they have a fire? So if somebody has a fire, the law states that they get to keep their homestead on their property for one year while they undergo rebuilding. For us, that's great because it leaves their frozen value locked into place. We don't remove that frozen value while they're rebuilding, and as long as they stay to that same footprint, once they're able to move back in, if they do so within the year, then they are still locked in and protected. Under the floating homestead, you'll notice, we've made year three here, the year of the fire. And you'll see that what happens is, is, is when the house is consumed by fire and you, all you have left is basically land value. So under the law, the homestead stays in place, so they still have their homestead on there for that one year. But their base value would now drop all the way down to this $39,000. Because the law states if there is a dramatic change to the property, we can revalue it under the floating homestead. So if you have a fire, that's a dramatic change to the property if the house goes away. All of a sudden, there's this dramatic change, and it allows us to reduce the value of that property to whatever the fair market value is without that, without that home site on it, but their homestead is still there. So that would allow them to drop all the way down. As soon as their house was put back, then we would go back to the base year values and back to the, the frozen value doesn't change that entire time, it stays in place. Now, who's going to set that inflation rate? That index? That's being set by the state, and the state has decided, it's subject to public hearings, but what they are suggesting using is a national index. So it won't even be specific to the state of Georgia. It's going to be based on a national CPI, as opposed to something that's local and Oh, homestead with an addition. Forgot about this one. So what happens if somebody adds on to the house? Now, if you add on to your frozen homestead, to your house, then we add the value of that addition, not the cost of it, but the value of that addition gets added to your frozen value. Same thing happens under, under the floating homestead for the base value. We can add the value to that base rate, and then it's still subject to the inflationary index. So you can see here where we have added a, an addition that assumed a $2,000, a $200,000 fair market value increase. So you'll notice the local value went from $112,000 to $192,000, and the base value went from $160,000 to $252,000. So that goes up in both cases. But once it's locked in at the $192 on our frozen, it stays there. And under the others, it can actually drop below that, and you'll notice that in year four on this example, if the, if the, if the floating is left in place and the market goes down by just 3%, it drops it down below that base value and then again in the last year. Our frozen value is still more valuable, but if you had that downward trend going one year longer, and you would find yourself in a situation where the floating homestead would be the more valuable of the two. So what happens with those who locked in at the top of the market and then values collapse? With the floating homestead, the base value, if they are upside down right now, if their homestead is greater than their fair market value, their assessed value, then they're paying more in tax than they would if they weren't homesteaded. Under this particular floating homestead, that would actually be less. The more valuable to them would be the floating homestead, and so that would be what would be applied. And this, this, we base this particular example on $100,000 local value at the time that the, that the property was homesteaded. There's approximately 1,100 properties that have local values that are higher than the assessed fair market value. Some of those are fires, demos, that kind of thing, storm damage, those kind of things that have affected it. Some of them are in their one-year rebuilding period, but that's approximately how many properties are affected in Muskogee County currently. Homesteaded, homesteaded. This only applies to homesteaded properties. So what does the opt-out mean? Couple of things. The current homestead freeze doesn't go away. It is there, it is frozen, it's not going anywhere, it's there. This is not an opt-out of our frozen homestead. I, I don't know how much clearer I can be, I'm going to say it again. The frozen homestead isn't going anywhere, it's there. The floating homestead that the state has put into place, we had this one-time opt-out. This is a state-controlled floating homestead. They can change this law, it is passed, they can change it, they can tweak it, they can do whatever they want with it. And they're already talking about making changes to it for this coming year. There's already some proposed legislation out there for 2025 legislative session that's going to change this bill. This gives control of the homestead to the state and not keeping it local here in Muskogee County. The inflationary index is not based on anything going on in Muskogee County. It's not even based on anything going on in the state of Georgia. This is a national index that they're planning on using.
Suzanne, excuse me, we do have a couple of questions, and I'll, I'll allow these individuals to speak real quickly, but if we could, let's let her go through the presentation because it gets kind of confusing.
I am just about done with the presentation, so.
Continue then.
Yep. So opting out does not foreclose the opportunity for us to petition the state legislature, the general assembly, for a local floating option if we so choose. But that would be an option that would be controlled by Muskogee County and by the citizens of Muskogee County and by council. That would not be one being controlled by the state, that would be tweaked by the state, that could be changed by the state, that's using national indexes. So by opting out, we free up Muskogee County to do what's in Muskogee County's best interest. If we want a floating homestead, you can opt out of this one and petition to do our own, where we could control it then, as opposed to the state controlling it. But if we don't opt out, that's it, it's done. That is in place, and it stays in place. There's no, there's no option to get out of it at any later time. But if you get out now, you have the option to put something else in place. One thing about opting out, it reduces the risks to tax revenue. If we have a downturn, if we have a crash in the market, if we have anything like that, our homestead keeps things stable, our current homestead keeps things stable, whereas this would allow for some dramatic, some pretty dramatic fluctuations to our, to our revenue. So that's something to, that's something to bear in mind. There's also going to be, there's a lot of expenses involved with implementing House Bill 581, not just limited to this particular portion of the bill, there's a lot of expenses that go along with a lot of the changes that are in there. So some of the, some of the, the changes have not been fully defined yet. Right now, we are currently at 132 hours. Only 14 of those hours are included in our contract with Tyler to do annual adjustments to our system based on legislation. That's something that we share with all of the other counties that use the same system that we do. So there's 118 hours remaining right now that they know of for certain, that are at 175 an hour, so that works out to almost $21,000. That, I have yet to get a defined estimate for our custom programming that's required to deal with the two-acre versus no-acre cap, to deal with tax district splits versus, because those, we, we have to split those up on accounts as well, those still have to be compared with the floating homestead. And just the ability for the systems to compare the two. So we do not have any kind of, of good definitive estimate from Tyler. I have sent multiple requests, they're working on it, they haven't gotten me a number yet because they're not exactly sure how they're going to pull off implementing this in our county. They're going to do it, but they don't know how yet. Personnel requirements just for the homestead portion is going to require additional appraisal tax because we will have to compare these properties. Right now, the way the system is set up, we're going to have to do a lot of manual comparisons to make sure that the properties that are not a cut and dry, very simple, this is an old homestead, has no changes, it's definitely going to be lower, but the ones that have, are underwater on their homesteads, or have fires, or have district splits, or have more than two acres, all of those, all of those are going to have to be manually reviewed to make sure that we are in fact selecting the correct homestead for those individuals. They have asked the legislature to clean up some parts of this bill in regards to the acreage, but even that, they're talking about five acres, not two acres, and we're at two acres, so that's already going to be an issue. And by, by "they," I'm talking about the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, the GAAO, in our policy statement to the legislature, we've requested that they clean this up a little bit. There's also, right now, there's some conflicting language with the homesteads, whereas the floating homestead is allowed to automatically transfer to spouses. Other homesteads don't allow that, so they have to clean that up. Normally, the spouse has to come in, if they're not already on the homestead, they have to come in and make specific application for it. This, this, the floating homestead does it automatically, it's not an issue. I mean, they come in, they sign the homestead card, and we make sure they keep their, their freeze, but it does, it just, it's work, it's just more manpower hours that have to, that have to be done, so. The other thing that they, that's on the proposed cleanups is certifying the estimated rollback rate to the tax assessor's office. Right now, it's only certified to the tax commissioner, and we actually need that number first in order to send out notices of assessment. So those are the, those are the last little bits of cleanup there that we've requested. There's some other stuff that's out there that representatives in both the House and the Senate of the General Assembly are planning on making some tweaks to this. So what actually passes, we don't know yet. We're hearing all kinds of things, there's, rumors are flying. So, but that's, that's basically the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. Does anybody know the percentage of votes in Muskogee County that this passed by? 73% of our voters voted for this HB, HB 581.
I didn't understand that's the question you were asking.
So we don't know. I'd like to know how, you know. We know that. I'd like to know how, you know, we know that it passed, I'd love to hear the percentage.
It passed by a pretty overwhelming margin.
That's what I thought. And are there currently any bills being worked in the state that would give control on the city, I mean, on the county or the city level?
No.
There's nothing like that that has been introduced?
There's a bill that they're working on, but I, I don't think anybody really knows, it's just to tweak some of the things that have caused the problems.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right, and Counselor Davis?
Madam Tax Assessor, I want to go back to a, a point that I think is a, uh, very key part of your presentation. You talked about a benefit to the taxpayer about opting in or staying where it's at now. You talked about a benefit, about a reduced valuation, right? Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna focus on that for a minute, because this, this matter, I want the citizens to know that it's extremely complicated, and it's taken, it's even taken me a while to figure it out, and it's not in layman's terms, and that may not be saying much, but even talking to our attorneys that looked into this and did opinions on it to try to get some clarification, there's some key things that really come up. Even though you talk about the benefit, there's a flip side of that, there's another story to that. And one of the things I've always learned, being on this council, there's always two sides of the story. So if that's the case, and you get these reduced valuations, which would most likely come in an economic downturn, as you described. And if the economic downturn comes, that means you're gonna have a housing crisis. And not only that, this city is built on pennies. People are not gonna be able to spend as much, and you're not gonna collect sales tax revenue. So the municipality is gonna be severely impacted with revenue coming in to run the operations of the city.
That's correct.
Okay? You have to have revenue to run the city.
That's correct.
In order to do that, the taxpayer or the property owner may get a valuation decrease, but nobody's telling that property owner that you can increase valuations, you can increase the millage. To get that revenue, you need to run the city. Nobody's telling them that you can expand the urban service districts all the way out in the middle and to one, in order to be able to generate new revenue. Nobody's telling them about the taxes and the other fees that would have to go up to run the operations of this city. If not, I think we all know where we're at now, and losing that revenue with the challenges that we have ahead in the terms of debt service, of the things that we're committed to and we've already committed to, where do you get that revenue? You could potentially bankrupt your city, but what, what would happen is that burden would increase on the property owner and other forms of taxation. So you may get a, may get a decrease in valuation, but you're gonna get an increase in other places. You can't have all of it work at the same time.
So I don't deal with taxes, I deal with values, and those would be questions to address to the Tax Commissioner and to the Finance Director, because all I can, all I can talk about is what this bill does to the valuations. Y'all are the ones that control the millage rate, and, and I'm not disputing anything that you are saying, Counselor Davis, at all. I pointed out the fact that if we have a downturn like we had in 2009, with this floating homestead in place, you risk your revenue generation.
Okay, well, that, that's fair, okay, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push you on that. I think, I think everybody understands what I'm saying, I think you understand what I'm saying, Ms. City Manager, I think you do, Mayor.
I mean, if you're asking my recommendation on what y'all think.
Well, I've already looked into it, and, and what I just explained is accurate, okay? It will happen, you have no other choice. That's the way the engine operates in Columbus, Georgia.
Here, here's the thing, it's, it's not that, that I don't have a choi, I mean, I have to do what the market says the values are going to do. Y'all have to do what you need to do to keep the revenues, but if I have to lower values because that's what the market says is happening, then that's what we do, we lower the values.
And normally what happens in other cities around the state is they may get a decrease in valuation, but their millage goes up to offset it.
Exactly.
That's what happens.
That's exactly right.
Everybody understands that, right? I mean, you understand that, so you get hit.
Yep.
You get hit in a different way. Now, let me, I've already looked into it, so you got, we gotta focus on the other side of the story. This stuff was not clear when the referendum went out. The referendum was confusing, you know, and if anybody tells me I'm gonna get an exemption, or I'm gonna get a tax break or whatever, I'm voting for it. But I may not know the rest of the story. And we're dealing with those things, and I'll tell you why I understand this, and my colleague here went through this. You were on council at the time we went through the Great Recession, right? Were you?
Was I? That way.
People don't remember how many years, how many years, Ms. City Manager, where we backed up to the 60-day limit on our reserves, and we had to cut, 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 we cut about to the bare bones, and we could not recover like, like the rest of the cities in the nation. Now, let me say this, we know for a fact, during the Great Recession, and this is the scenario we're talking about if valuations come down. Because if the world's great and economy, the economic conditions good, it's just gonna stay where it is. I mean, that's just, your values are gonna stay where they're at, all right? And another thing to add to that is there's a property tax freeze on both sides, opt-in and opt-out, you still have to vote that off. So that doesn't just automatically go away, you would still have to vote that off as an option, all right? Excuse me. All right, so in, um, during the Great Recession, we were told that if it wasn't for two things, that Columbus, Georgia would have been the most severely financially impacted city in this nation, we would have been on the top of the list, we would have been bankrupt. You know what the two things that, that saved our city back then? And I know, because I was in business, and I was scared, I couldn't sleep at night every day, because I didn't know where the next dollar was gonna come from, I thought we were gonna bankrupt. But it came from the stable revenue of the sales tax freeze, that money was stable and it came in. The other thing that saved us, the really, the big thing that saved us was BRAC. We had several billion dollars worth of development going on in BRAC, they were building a new city out there, we were the beneficiaries of it, and I know, because those people stayed in my hotels. If we didn't have those people there, we would have went bankrupt. So I know the impact of what it would hit our city. If you look at our city, what we're built on, the economic foundations of our city, we're built on, we're different from other cities in the state of Georgia. We're built on what I call retail, sales jobs, and multifamily. Other communities are built on corporate salary jobs and residential. It's just where we're at, that's what we have in our community that stabilizes us. We have a huge transient rental base in Columbus, Georgia, but we survive because our pennies are up over $50 million. That's why we survive. And if we have any economic downturn, they all come down, it all comes down, you're gonna be severely impacted. We're not gonna have a BRAC again, I don't think, anytime soon. And so if we hit that point, and the valuations and everything start coming down, our city's gonna be severely impacted like no other city in the state, and that's what I'm focusing on. And that message is not coming out to people, you may have options, but what do we do in the best-case scenario to protect our city from going bankrupt and providing the services we need for our citizens? That's the key question that's on the table with this opt-in and opt-out. That's the other side of the story you're not hearing, but that could happen. And so that's why I personally, that I'm looking at the opt-out option, because the tax freeze still exists, and it does, it exists even if you opt in, it's still there. Either way, you got, it's gotta be voted down or voted away. But right now, what's in the best interest, I think of everybody, that you won't get a severely impact, including the city and the property owners, is the opt-out, because Columbus is unique and different from other cities, and the first thing that goes in an economic crisis and downturn is retail sales jobs, that's hourly jobs, by the way. We've got a lot of hourly jobs in our community. It's okay, but that's just what it is. And we're losing a lot of corporate salary jobs, we're losing those right now, which, you know, we have to replace those somehow. But multifamily goes down too. And if that's the case, your revenue gets severely impacted. And I remember those days, Ms. City Manager, you remember? And, uh, you know, God forbid you have a black swan event where it just wipes your whole community out, I, you know, I, I think that's something that really has to resonate, but, you know, having those public hearings, or having the option where the citizens can vet, you need to vet what I'm saying, okay? You really need to vet what I'm saying and understand it yourself. But that's how you weigh it, you, you, you weigh this thing, because on the, what we see on paper and what you're explaining and all, I'm telling you, it's extremely complicated to understand, and it's hard to put in layman's terms.
So if, if you're interested in pursuing the opt-out, the, the thing to remember is that time is very, very short, because this has to be completed, you have to hold three hearings, you have to advertise those hearings at least seven days prior, and you have to have everything completed, no later, up to the Secretary of State by the first of March. So it's a very, very tight timeline. I believe that we have dates proposed, if, if that's what, if that's what council chooses to, um, to pursue. And if nothing else, hold the hearings, and then depending on what the taxpayers say, then you can vote to opt-in or to opt-out.
Let's, let's get some clarification, we're, we're about to lap ourselves. All right, all right. Continue.
And I want people to also know, to your point, we're having this conversation now. A lot of people have had this conversation, we're starting to have it now, we just got this opinion back a couple of days ago. I think that you, you've got to have that dialogue before you even, you make a decision on this, you've got to. It would be to, to vote on this thing like this without being able to communicate to our constituents in the, in the city.
You have to have the hearings.
That message is not getting out right now, we gotta get that message out. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Ms. City Manager?
I, I really don't know where to start, but let me just, um, say, I, I agree with, and I don't typically agree with, um, Counselor Davis 100%, but I think, you know, the way you have crafted your explanation, we, I do have dates for hearings, and they're there, we're gonna show it, we brought dates just in case, so that we can get in under the timeline. But, you know, if we have hearings, I mean, I'm sitting here saying I need to have them pull the clip on what you explained, and let the clip play first, and then have the conversation. I mean, you've gone back to the recession, um, you've, Columbus is different, um, and, I mean, all that you say, I'm, I'm here, you've obviously studied the situation and, and know what we could be faced with, not necessarily us, but our children or grandchildren would be faced with. But with that said, it, you, you said even, you said, I wrote your words, it's extremely complicated. You're right in that too. And, uh, the Tax Assessor is correct, there's legislation, um, to, um, extend the opt-out deadline, they're trying to move it from March to somewhere June to give you more time, but I heard of when she said that there's proposed legislation already on the table, and we don't know what legislation will come three years, five years out. The example I will use in how legislation works, a lot of us were here when they passed the Hope Scholarship legislation. Go and pull the Hope Scholarship legislation when it passed, and go and look at, look at Hope Scholarship today. It's nothing like, it's a, it's not even the same bill. And so will this happen with House Bill 581? They're already tweaking it. So House Bill 581 that they put on the ballot, we put on the ballot, will 581 10 years from now look like it looks today, what she explained to you? If you use Hope Scholarship as an example, I think you can safely say no. But yet, you didn't opt out, and you're in for eternity. You can't change it. And so it's extremely complicated, and the other side, as you said, there's two sides. What you explained, I'm serious, it, it needs to be put in the clip, and we need to have the three public hearings, and they need to hear that, because I, I, I can't articulate it the way I just heard you. And then referencing the recession, yeah, I was here as City Manager in 2008, 2009, and, and I remember we, our goal, and staff who were here remember, I know Counselor Hickey was here, our goal was to lay off, reduce the workforce by 150 employees. That was our goal. Mayor Protem, you were here, and we gave people packages to leave this government. Our goal was to reduce the workforce by 150 because of that situation. And, and being caught up in legislation like this could put us back in a situation, not me, but, and maybe not some of us, but it's our children and grandchildren. So I, I'll leave it there, that there's legislation that's ongoing, it's extremely complicated, and you could have the three meetings and still come back and decide that you're either gonna opt out or no opt out, but at least you, you got in under the deadline with the three public meetings. And so we have dates that Deputy City Manager Hodge is going to share. If you want to have those public meetings, we've gotta advertise, and we've gotta advertise like in the next day or two, because it's a full-page ad. And, and advertise, and have the hearings, and then come back within time to meet the March 1 deadline, if you decide to opt out, you can do that. And, uh, we've met with the school district officials, they've had some public meetings, they've had those public meetings, I don't think they've taken their vote yet, but the sense that I get is that they are going to opt out. And so we can have an opt-out and a no opt-out, and run dual systems, and hire more people, and adjust the software, it's a, it's a council decision. So Mayor, I, I leave it there.
Yeah, and if, if I could just add one thing, one thing that I don't know that we touched on very much, and one of the reasons that the other communities, like when we were at GMA, and we were talking to a lot of these leaders from other areas, why they were urging some of their folks to consider staying in, is because it's accompanied with a new instrument called a FLOST, which is a floating local option sales tax. A local option sales tax is not like a SPOLOST, that is for a specific period of time, specific items. The FLOST would be a local option sales tax, which would be utilized for paying operations, and it would go in perpetuity. We don't have access to that, because consolidated governments are only allowed two local option sales taxes. And one of ours was a commitment made to the, uh, community to have 70% go towards public safety, 30% towards infrastructure, so that's off the table. The other communities, when they have an opportunity and they see that floating, uh, assessment, the freeze go down, then they can enact the FLOST, which replaces that funding with, um, with the sales tax. And I, so that's the, that's one of the major differences between Columbus- And I, so that's the, that's one of the major differences between Columbus and some of these other communities, because we don't have that as an option. Uh, Councilor Tucker?
Yes. Um, City Attorney, you sent something, and I'm trying to see if it was attorney-client privilege where we had an opinion that was asked for by Councilor Crabbe. Is that something that can be read, um, for the record right now?
I can tell you the basis of it, just orally say what it said, and that's that the House Bill 581 does not adversely affect our local constitutional homestead freeze. Either way you go, opt-in or opt-out, well, you can only opt out. You stay in or you opt out. But either way you go, the local constitutional homestead freeze is not adversely affected. In other words, it stays as is until the people repeal it, which may or may not happen in the future. So it's not going anywhere, uh, as part of the Georgia Constitution. But what, what this bill does is allows another layer of homestead exemption on top of what we have, and the 581 exemption only comes into play if it's more beneficial, like Ms. Wydenhouse says. If you have a fire damage, if you have economic downturn and values go down, uh, at least temporarily, that may benefit the taxpayer more than our frozen exemption that's in place right now. But that's the only time it would come into play, is if you've got something more beneficial to taxpayers in Columbus.
And who was that that provided that information to?
Uh, we had one opinion from Troutman Pepper in Atlanta, and the Attorney General, that one of the Assistant Attorney Generals, Mr. Banks, did weigh in and say the same thing, that there's nothing in the state legislation that adversely affects our local homestead freeze. So we, we got that unofficial word from the Georgia Attorney General.
Okay. Thank you for explaining it.
It does not appear to be any more questions. Suzanne, thank you. It's, it is a tough subject to try to address. Uh, you did a good job in, in walking us through it, so.
I, I do want Deputy City Manager Hodge to, um, share of the, our TAM LAN for, uh, newspaper advertisement, uh, and public hearing dates, because I think what I'm hearing around the table, consensus would be, go ahead and have, advertise and have the public meetings, the three public meetings. And then once we hear from the citizens, um, you know, of course, we're going to come back to you because you're going to have to make a decision, one way or the other. And so we'll, I, I think I hear, have the three public me, advertise, have the three public meetings, and then come back and tell us what you heard, what you got from the citizens. So with that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have, um, prepared the three public meetings. We would have to have the ad to the paper by this Thursday for it to run, and the Sunday physical paper on February 2nd, and then we would run it again on February 3rd in the digital paper. We would have three public meetings on Monday, February 10th at 9:00 a.m., on Monday, February 10th at 6:00 p.m., and then on Tuesday, February 11th during a council meeting at 9:00 a.m. And we would host those meetings in council chambers for all three meetings. And I have, uh, prepared, uh, the ad, same ad that the school district ran outlining the public meetings, and also the explanation at the bottom that's, um, provided that there would be no change to the current frozen homestead. So we did add that explanation, uh, similar to what the school district did when they hosted their public meetings. So we will, um, go ahead and send this to the newspaper and have those public ads ran and host those three public meetings on February 10th and February 11th.
Very good. Thank you.
And then it would be on council agenda to vote either February 11th or February 25th in order to meet that March 1st deadline if council does choose to opt out.
Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to highlight again, I know the tax assessor did talk about the scenario of where all this transacts is in a down or a economic downturn, okay? Everybody needs to know that. But, Mr. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong on this, you may get some, what they float around as an extra exemption or something like that, but those are subject to change.
Oh, yeah, that's a point.
Anytime.
That's a point, yeah.
In the state, if it's a downturn, they're not going to be giving away money, I promise you that. But you still in the same scenario with the tax freeze on either side. You can vote to remove it over here, you can vote to remove it over here. If you vote to remove it over here, you're going, your valuations are going down. You still in a scenario that's pretty much equal to what you're talking about. The thing is, what everybody needs to understand, the city is going to have to do, including the tax assessor, whatever they need to do in, in order to operate the city and provide the services. And we kind of know what that is in down times. And the only way to do that, if you lose revenue, pennies, sales tax revenue, which will go down, and property taxes, remember, you have no other choice but to expand the urban service districts and raise the millage. And if you especially have debt service, which we just took on 50 million, we're going to have to build a new jail, we've got a judicial bill, that's going to be paid for by sales tax revenue, okay? A lot of that, I hope that the citizens are gracious enough to be able to offset that debt later by that. But if not, you're going to have to raise the millage rate, and the millage rate is going to tap out in the places where it's not fully high right now. And I'm not so sure where the, uh, the millage cap and how that applies here. But I'm, I'm guessing we would still have the millage cap.
Yes.
Okay? That doesn't come off with, with removal of the tax freeze. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So you would have to, you would have to raise the integrated waste fee, you would have to come up with other fees and taxes to able to provide the services, whether it's waste, public services, public health, public safety, or to provide the needs or else you just, you know, your city's not going to be able to operate. I'm just kind of throwing that scenario out there of what could happen in the future. But all this would apply in an economic downturn situation, and that's not going to be good for anybody and be good for Columbus, Georgia.
Absolutely. So, so Mayor, you know, we've never voted for a, to have public meetings, to my knowledge, you know, and so we would just have the three public meetings and collect information from the citizens and bring it back and present it to you, this body, and then this body can decide what, what, what you want to do for Columbus.
Councilor Tucker?
Yes, while we have not had to vote to have public meetings, the reading, the intent to opt out is a little deceptive because we have not voted as a, a council body to say that we want to opt out, because I personally am not going to vote yes to opt out when the citizens voted for this. So I don't know, because I know in reference to advertising, what was the actual, um, requirements in reference to doing the three meetings? Can we just say meetings on House?
The language is, the language is set in the law that has to be.
So it has to say that.
It has to say that, yes.
Yes, because.
I think the idea behind it is to drive citizens in to comment.
And, and you can still, you know, even though the advertisement is what it is, when we come back, you can take your vote and go either way you want.
And, and that's true. And that's, that's the thing. The thing is, we have not voted in reference to saying that this council body is going to opt in or opt out. So just letting the citizens know that we are having this meeting, but this council body is, is not in agreement as a council body that we're opting out. We're just, we're just having the meetings.
We'll make sure that they know that no council vote has been taken, and council will decide when we go back to them, uh, with the feedback from public meetings.
There could actually be some minds change based on the open hearings.
But that's in any public meeting we do. I mean, it was in, with pause, I mean, you could have voted that down. I mean, a public meeting is just a public meeting. But the council, it's subject to the approval and vote of the council, anything we do. And that's very clear.
Yeah. But I, I understand in reference to the law, in reference to the actual verbiage that has to be on that, that message, but just to make it clear that as a council body as a whole, because I do know that there are governments like Winnet County or just like our school board that already know they're going to vote to opt out. So I just want to make that known that we have not.
I, I don't know what you all are going to do. That's how we're going to break.
No, I'm just saying, we have not, as a council body, all agreed that we're opting out.
That's right.
All right. Councilor Crabbe?
I just wanted to reiterate that I don't have a problem having these three meetings because I think that this is a decision of the citizens, um, and I want their input. I mean, there, I totally understand that 65%, I did get the number, 65% voted for this, but they may not, more than likely, they did not understand what they were voting for. And so I think that this gives us an opportunity to explain it to the citizens, let them give us some feedback so that we make a decision, because the citizens are our boss. They make the decision. And I think it's good that, that, you know, Councilman, um, Glenn Davis, um, brought up some of the other side of the story of what needs to be done, and, but there's other things that can be done, too, other than just raising fees or raising taxes. We can, we can do a lot of the things in this, this government more efficiently and more effectively, and, and so there's, there's a lot of things we can do. And so I do, um, I don't have a problem with having these meetings, but I do sincerely want to express it's to gather information, it's not that we're, our intent is to opt out at this point in time.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can give you the exact numbers of the vote, uh, 46,275 people said yes, uh, that's 6 to 1.5%. And 28,920 people said no, that's 38.5%. Those are the ye, yes votes and the no votes. 6 to 1.5% said yes, uh, and 38.5% said no.
Well, the, um...
These are the numbers that came from, uh, from elections and registration. I had them to have her, Nancy Boring, to send this to us.
Well, that's, I mean, listen, that's why the, the process includes three public meetings, so that you can listen to the citizens and maybe they get a little bit of better explanation. It may matter to them, it may not, but it allows the council to make a decision after that as to whether or not they want to go through with opting out or if they want to stay in. Councilor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, how many total registered voters do we have?
Do we have?
On the roll?
Um, it's, it's somewhere close to, um, 100,000. Uh, I think we've got, let's see, um, 94, somewhere around 94 to 100,000 registered voters.
So, and we know, I think we know how many people showed up to vote, but I think it would be realistic to say that a number of people chose not to vote on it because they didn't understand it.
All right.
And, and I'm talking off the top of my head. I don't want anyone to go and quote me. I'm just giving you a number that comes to mind.
I think the total, total registered voters are, you told me the total registered? Yeah, it's, it was, well, it was at least 60 some thousand.
The, the total votes?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting the text right now. I'm going to give you the real number from elections and registration. Um, that number is 100 in registered voters, 124,000, 013 active voters, 124,013 active voters, and that's from the elections office. Well, seven, about 75,000 that adds up to?
You gave me what, 24, 25,000 people voted?
I, I, what I gave you was, um, 46,275 said yes, and 28,920 said no, out of 124,000 active voters.
We'll look forward to the public meetings and be able to get the information and, uh, some feedback from the citizens. Um, Mr. City Attorney, let me move to your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The, um, first zoning item, uh, if you recall it, for 50, 55201 Macon Road, for that zoning, there were alternate sets of conditions spelled out in the ordinance. So the first thing we need is a motion to perhaps put the planning department conditions in the ordinance as an amendment, and then the council can vote the entire ordinance up or down. If we could get a motion to...
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just so the folks in the audience know, this is a legal process in case at some point this, this rezoning is appealed. So that's, that's what we're doing there. Uh, I would like to make a motion that the planning, uh, conditions be added as part of the ordinance rezoning.
All right. There is a motion. Is there a second?
I just have a question.
Okay. To the, to the motion?
Yes, I got a question.
Yes, sir. Councilor Hickey?
Um, is Mr. Will up here? So the planning, uh, condition was, uh, proposed, uh, was to remove condition number seven and eight. And so when, when we remove those, uh, okay, so seven, seven says a, uh, 50-foot right-of-way dimension, uh, a 50-foot right-of-way within the subdivision shall be approved for road A, B, and C, assuming not more than 30 lots of, uh, served, uh, from any one of these roads. And number eight was a modification, modified stream buffer. The state of Georgia, uh, 25-foot stream buffer will be defaulted, uh, standard for the stream buffering along stream corridor from point X to point Y as shown on the revised site concept plan. So if we remove these, uh, this, these being your conditions, so are we replacing this with anything?
No.
So they're not?
They would just be, you would have them, they would say reserved.
Okay. So is there, can, can you explain to me why, why we want to remove those?
Those are, um, uh, recommendations from our engineering department.
Okay.
I think our normal right-of-way width, width is 60 feet, uh, for local streets, and then the modified stream buffer is, um, best practices, and I believe that is state law, that we don't have any jurisdiction over.
Okay.
But I would defer to, I'd defer to engineering on that, but, um, those were their recommendations, and we concur.
Okay. Okay. Clear now.
All right. Uh, Councilor Davis, is that to the motion?
Um, no, it's not to the motion.
Okay, well, is there, we're, right now, we don't have a second. Is there a second?
So, uh, just one other question. So if it's 25 foot, uh, for the stream buffer... So if it's twenty-five foot, uh, for the stream buffer, so what, what is the state requirement? I mean, that, uh, that, so that's the state requirement that is twenty-five foot, right?
It is twenty-five feet, uh...
Twenty-five feet, I mean.
Top of bank, yes.
Okay.
And in some places, it, I think if it's a, one of seven major, um, of the seven major creeks in Muskogee County, it might be fifty, but again, I would defer all that to our engineering department.
So are we, uh, so you don't know what the engineer department's saying that we'll be replacing that with?
What, what, by removing those two conditions?
Right.
The engineering department, through their process of all subdivisions, would do it themselves. They would make that determination.
Right, okay.
And, and it, this is also a preliminary site plan. It's not engineered or anything.
Okay.
So once they got something engineered, they would hate to be held, uh, to an ordinance.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. Okay, okay. All right. I saw, I seconded the motion.
Okay.
To amend.
Motion and a second. Uh, is it to the motion, Counselor Davis?
No.
All righty, uh, that's the only one on, so we'll go ahead and take that vote. Are you, I didn't see you on there, Counselor, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, to the, to the motion.
So we're voting to remove these?
Just remove those two.
And then we vote on the...
Then we vote on...
So these two are for future, we vote down, this has nothing to do with voting up and down on this?
No. Correct.
This is just to set the conditions, and they'll be as recommended by the planning department if you vote yes.
Typically adds a layer of protection in the event it did pass. You did that, okay. All right, um, no more comments to the motion. There has been a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, they will be made part of the ordinance.
Right, now you can take a vote on the entire ordinance as amended.
Counselor Davis?
Yes. Mayor, as you know, and we've, and I want citizens to understand this, we, we've kinda had a courtesy procedure that we've always followed over the years when some, when a developer or a petitioner was asked to present a, uh, uh, some documents in this case, um, and I believe that happened last time at the council meeting, that he was asked to present some documents or changes. I don't know where that's at, but certainly it's always been a courtesy of council to hear the petitioner out, and I don't know if the petitioner's here. It doesn't have anything to do with the vote or anything like that. It's just a courtesy, uh, he was asked to show a, I guess, any kind of changes or any kind of a change to a site plan. I think if anything, the, even if it's voted down, the residents can still see what conceptually could happen in the future, but I don't know what that is, but I do know that we've always had a courtesy. The petitioner was asked to bring documents back, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we'll, uh, it would, if you wanna make a motion for him to be heard, it is outside our, our, uh, procedure, but if you wanna make a motion, then we can allow him...
Well, like I said, I think it's always been a procedural courtesy, and I'll make that motion that he's heard. Doesn't have anything to do with the vote or anything, but he was in public asked to bring any potential change, and he may, the developer may say he doesn't have anything or that he doesn't wanna speak, so I, I don't know, but I'm offering that courtesy.
We have a motion to allow the developer to bring to the council, um, any modifications to the original plan, is that correct?
If there are any.
If, if there are any, is there a second to that?
I made that request, and he has presented it to me, and I've shared it with his body.
So there is still a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, Mayor, he was asked in public to bring it here and present it at the council.
I got you.
I think that was the exact words.
Okay, so, so we have a motion. I need a second if we wanna consider that motion.
He was asked to bring it...
All right, that dies for lack of a second.
Okay, then we can take a vote on the entire ordinance.
Now we can, uh...
There was no motion or second.
Huh?
There was no...
No, not yet, to the overall ordinance? No, there is not, you're right. Counselor Hickey?
I moved to, uh, make a motion that we denied the rezoning.
Say second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for denial. Uh, if we could put that up on the screen and let the council enter their votes, please. So, a yet, a yet, a yes vote means deny.
Yeah, yes vote, a yes vote.
My computer's not on.
Here's, also, is that a, it's a verbal yes. Verbal yes, all right, that is, uh, unanimous for the counselors attending the meeting that, uh, it has been denied. I know a lot of you were here for that particular item, so if you leave, we would just ask you to do it quietly. We will, uh, take a short pause.
Oh, I don't know. Hey. Thank you. Exit quiet. You always give them a courtesy.
Um, I know who's waiting for everybody to, to leave out.
Pretty quiet.
When you go to item number two, I wanna make a motion, um, to amend the proposed budget.
Okay. Well...
You want me to read it?
No, 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 he'll, when, let him read it, and then you can modify. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
All right, item two is the mid-year budget amendment that was discussed at the last meeting. Uh, various positions are being added, uh, certain funds to cover those, but we got a motion to amend.
Yeah, um, I move to amend the proposed FY twenty-five mid-year budget amendment by removing the additional positions allocated to the finance department and replacing them with two licensed tax clerk positions.
All right, um...
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Counselor Chambers?
Um, I think Ms. Hollowell is here for a presentation. I would like to at least hear that before we...
Bring it up.
Okay.
So if she could bring up the presentation, that would be great.
Yes, we can do that, I guess, that's reasonable.
Uh, at the last council meeting, uh, the human resources department was asked to take a look at the finance department, uh, positions that were being requested in the FY twenty-five budget, make a position assessment, and then bring, uh, that information back to council. So, uh, I do have a brief presentation today that I do want to share with you all. In that presentation, uh, what we did, uh, we looked at the department's organizational chart and those divisions within that department. We took a ten-year snapshot of the department in terms of the number of employees in that department and the overall operations budget that they are charged with managing, and then we answered two questions that council had, uh, with regard to, uh, whether there was, two questions that council had, and we wanted to respond to those. And then we looked at the key indicators that would suggest that there is a need for more personnel or some sort of reorganization within the department. Uh, so just real briefly, a few slides that I have, I'll share with the council. So the finance department here, you're looking at their org chart, uh, the, those, uh, blocks in green are the new positions that are requested in the FY twenty-five budget. Uh, the new positions include the assistant finance director position, a new position, a new administrative assistant position, a revenue analyst position, a revenue auditor position, and three additional tax licensing clerk positions. And this next slide is just an overview of those six cost center divisions within that department, uh, finance administration, accounting, financial planning, purchasing, revenue, and cash management. This next slide is the ten-year snapshot or look back at the budget and the employees in that department. So we looked at, uh, from FY fifteen to FY twenty-five. Uh, that second column there is the finance department's actual budget, that department. In FY fifteen, we saw that their budget was at two-point-six million, and in the FY twenty-five budget, they're at three, just over three million. And then those next three columns, the number of employees in that department, uh, we separated out the revenue employees and then a total number of employees. If you look at those, uh, council, you'll see that since FY twenty-fifteen, uh, up until FY twenty-five, ten years later, the employees within the finance department have remained stable and unchanged. Uh, although if you look in the last column there, where you see the CCG adopted budget in twenty, in FY fifteen, the adopted budget was at two-hundred-and-sixty-three million plus, and in the FY twenty-five budget, we're at three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-six million plus. So the CCG's operating budget has increased by more than seventy-two-point-six million dollars, whereas since FY fifteen, the number of employees in the finance department and particularly in the revenue department has remained, has remained flat or unchanged. One of the questions we wanted to respond to that came up at last, uh, the last council meeting was whether there were other departments that had more than one assistant department director. So on this slide here, if you look to the left, we see three departments within the general government. In public works, there are two assistant directors. At the trade center, there are two assistant directors, and in our information technology department, there are two assistant directors. In the public safety departments, if you look at the police department, there are two assistant directors, and at the Muskogee County prison, there are two deputy warden positions there. Another question that was asked at the council last meeting was when the current assistant finance director position came into existence, in the FY oh-three budget, the financial planning division manager position was reclassified to an assistant finance director. That's when that department first gained an assistant finance director position, and that position is located in the financial planning division. And if you look to the right, uh, there's a part of the org chart for the finance department, you see that the finance director position heads, and, and it's over the purchasing division, the budget and financial analyst division, and the accounting division. Uh, it does not have any oversight of the revenue division. Uh, so further doing an analysis, and again, this was quick work, typically an analysis of what was being requested would take far longer than the time given, but we wanted to provide as much information as we could to the council at today's meeting. So in terms of a needs assessment, some of the key indicators that we would look at are increased workloads, where employees are consistently working longer hours, they are working overtime. The quality of their work may decline in order to meet deadlines. And then you have customer complaints, they tend to increase due to increased delays in service delivery. Uh, many times, the department is not able to take on new projects due to capacity limitations. And then your turnover rate increases due to workloads. Uh, as experienced in the finance department and other departments, there are typically seasonal fluctuations, uh, in workloads that cause the workload to spike and additional, uh, staff is needed. And then lastly, cross-training opportunities are missed when you're working with a temporary staff because they are just there for a specific period of time and, uh, does not give an opportunity to do, uh, long-term planning. Additionally, as we did have an opportunity to drill down just a little bit further, looking at the needs assessment, uh, trying to make a determination of the needs in that department, we looked at the FY twenty-three budget where six-point-nine percent of the revenue personnel expenses was geared toward overtime. And then in FY twenty-four, we saw that five percent of the revenue personnel expenses went toward overtime. And lastly, this is something that actually came up, uh, when you all were talking about whether we're gonna opt out or stay in with regard to our taxes. Uh, positions were unfunded or deleted in two thousand and six. During that time period, somewhere between two thousand and five, two thousand and eight time period, the finance department, along with other departments, uh, in order to, uh, allow for the budget to be balanced, was asked to cut, uh, in many of the departments, my department included, uh, had, uh, cut positions. And in the finance department, in their revenue division specifically, uh, two fiscal techs were deleted, uh, or unfunded, two customer service representatives were deleted or unfunded, and one administrative tech position was deleted or unfunded. And based on my, uh, view of the budget, since that time, since two thousand and six, most departments have worked diligently to try to get those positions back that were deleted in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, because they deleted those positions because of bu- budget constraints. It wasn't because they didn't need the positions. So that's what it happened in two thousand and six, and I don't see where any of those positions have been replaced since we talked. As I looked at that ten-year look back, uh, those positions don't seem to, those positions have not been, uh, placed back within the budget for finance. And then another thing in terms of just looking at a needs assessment, one of the things we look at is the average years that an, that employees are within a department. I will tell you that overall for city government, the average years of service right now is eight years of service, which is good. We'd like for it to be better, but the average years of service is eight years. We just looked at each, each area within the finance department, where you see in administration, there are the average years of service of the employees in that area is eight, and accounting is nine-point-six. Over in purchasing, there's nine-point-two years of service, and in revenue occupational pack... Over in Purchasing, there's 9.2 years of service, and in Revenue Occupational Taxes at 7.3, where you see a limited number of years in service is in Cash Management and Financial So the, there have been several audits within the Finance Department over the last couple of years, and I just wanted to share this information. The auditors, each of the audits that have been conducted within the Finance Department recommended additional personnel, both the external auditors as well as the internal auditors. The Malden and Jenkins Audit recommended more staffing in the Revenue Division. Troutman Pepper recommended more staffing in the Revenue Division, and they also stated there needed to be an increase in employee retention and training. The Acuity's Audit recommended more staffing in the Revenue Division, and they also recommended there, there needed to be an increase in employee retention and training. And finally, the CCG Internal Auditor also recommended more staffing in the Purchasing Division. So those positions that are being requested, there's a total of eight positions in the Finance Department requested in the FY '25 budget, and you see them listed there, I won't go over those, but the three of those positions are new positions that were, new position meaning that they have not existed within the department before. Those positions were evaluated by Human Resources and Evergreen Solutions, our consultant. The Revenue Analyst recommended out of pay grade 123, an Assistant Finance Director at grade 132, and the Purchasing Analyst position at grade 123. Those positions were deemed to be appropriate, classified, and graded. And I do want to point out that in the evaluation of the positions, Evergreen nor, Evergreen is not making a recommendation that says the department should have these positions. Their recommendation is based on the job analysis of the position and whether it's, the pay is appropriate for the duties that would be expected within that position. So based on the brief analysis, assessment that Human Resources was able to conduct in the short limit of time that we had, our recommendation and assessment is that the positions in the FY '25 budget that have been requested by the Finance Department, we would recommend approval of those positions. And that ends my brief presentation for today.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, I, I just want to, to say that, you know, the Finance Department has to have the revenue, the personnel that they need if we expect to move it to the next level. And, and no one, I don't know, and I don't think anybody around this table knows what's needed better than the Finance Director. And you've asked the HR Director to evaluate, excuse me, the HR Director, and the HR Director has evaluated. You see all the external audits and the internal audits. Who are we going to listen to? Are we going to listen to the auditors, external, internal? Are we going to listen to the HR Director? Are we going to listen to the Finance Director? I mean, who knows better than the people who are hands-on day in and day out? And I would urge you, us, to listen to them. And, and so if you don't listen, and I don't know what results you're expecting, I think we're setting, further setting the Finance Director up for failure. We are setting her, we're setting that department up for failure. We need to listen to the Finance Director. And that's what I want to say, Mayor.
Agreed. Counselor Chambers?
So, a couple of questions. I know at one point, we were in discussion about maybe outsourcing some of the work. Is that correct? Where, where are we with that?
So, Mayor, the RFP has been released, I think it was released last week. And, and so we're going to go through that process. And, and I say to you, I hope that we're successful so that they can pass this on to someone else, and you will get to see in this process what that someone else is going to ask for in terms of cost and personnel to do what they have been doing with the skeleton crew. I look forward, I look forward to the response. And I say to you that they need these employees even if we contract it out. My concern is, the question in my mind, are we going to have a backstop? Are we going to have insurance, security? If we contract out and they come in here and we're processing 8,000, 9,000 business license annually, and we're collecting 22 to 30 million dollars as we continue to grow, you're going to need a contract manager to watchdog that organization, that group that we put down there. And we're going to have to have people ready to step in if they fail us. And so if we want to just go and contract out and, and, and sit in our offices and say they got it, and they'll report to the Council or someone, I don't think that's a wise move. And so I want the record to reflect, you know, that everything that I'm saying, because I will be the one from the outside looking in saying, "I told you so." And so if they fail us, we're going to have a problem in this city because we will have 8,000 business licenses out there, whatever they're going to be doing, and you're going to have 25 million dollars or more that you're trying to figure out something on. And Finance is going to be sitting back saying, "Ain't my job." And I'm telling you, I'm, 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 I'm just warning you that we are putting this city government in a terrible position. One, for not listening to the Finance Director, and two, if we think we're going to contract out and just nobody there for, for 8,000, 9,000 business licenses, we better rethink that. And so that's, you know, but the, the RFP is out, and I hope we're successful. And I think it's going to come, when it comes, with a huge cost. It's going to be, I, I'm, I'm, I can't wait to see how much difference in number of employees and the cost versus what we're spending today. I can't wait.
Counselor Chambers, do you have any other questions?
Yes, I, so I, you know, I heard the key indicators as far as increased workload, the work quality decline, customer complaints, not able to take on new projects, turnover rate increase, and cross-training opportunities and things of that nature. But reading the indicators, to me, I feel that the more entry-level positions are more critical in order to get this work completed. Those are just my thoughts. I know that, as you stated, Evergreen did not make a recommendation for those three positions, but I really would like us to figure out how we can fill these entry-level slots so that the work can get done. So, I mean, because if you listen to these key indicators, increased workload, I mean, customer complaints, you know, I think it's very critical that we have our entry-level positions filled to be able to address these indicators. And even down to the positions that were unfunded and deleted, we may need to take another look as far as trying to fund these positions because a lot of the work is being done at the entry level in those slots. So, I mean, those are just my thoughts.
All right. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. When the budget went up, it was my understanding that we were investing in software so that they can process the financials more efficiently and more effectively. And I do remember, as part of these audit reports, when they were saying increase employee retention and training, that they mentioned that they were not using the software that we had provided them properly, that they needed to get more training on the software so that they could use it, and that they were using multiple software at the same time, and they were going back and forth. I remember them saying all of that. So where are we on training the current employees on the software?
Director Alexander is here, and she can respond to that, Counselor.
Good evening. In terms of the training on the software, well, let me just say, in terms of the software in general, there are efficiencies that have been gained. Some of the gains that we've put forth in terms of the current software that we have is the ability for people or businesses to pay certain excise taxes online. Employees were trained on how to input the data into the software system to, for those excise taxes. We have discontinued utilizing old methods of recording payments for most of our excise taxes. It used to be that we would maintain Excel spreadsheets, numerous Excel spreadsheets in terms of tracking and, tracking the payment and the revenues that we receive for these excise taxes. We've discontinued that for most of the excise taxes that we collect, and those taxes are available to be paid online. We are still implementing another phase, I guess I should say, of additional excise taxes that can be paid online. We have engaged the software vendor. We utilize a product that is owned by Tyler Technologies. They will be on-site February, the week of February 10th to further make improvements to the program so that we can get out of doing some of the more manual processes that we do and utilize the software program to its fullest capacity. So we, we've gained some efficiencies. Employees have been trained on those efficiencies, and we are further making improvements and have engaged the, the vendor. They'll be on-site here with us the week of February 10th.
Okay. I mean, these...
Anything else, Counselor Crabbe?
Let me just, really quickly.
All right. Counselor Chambers?
Question. So how many, how many temp employees do you have currently?
It's a revolving door of temporary employees. Currently, this week, because I'll be losing another one as of Friday, but currently this week, I have four temporary employees, one started yesterday.
So, anytime you have a, a temporary worker, they don't stay long, and you have to turn around and retrain. It's a revolving door. And I think we really need to, we need to pay attention to that. And I think I talked about this a while back. And if I had to make a bet, it's because pay, I, I will put that at the top of the list. Because I guarantee you, you have entry-level team members in your department with four-year degrees. Am I right or wrong?
Yes.
And they're probably waiting until they hit six months to find an internal position or look for opportunity outside the company. Am I right or wrong?
Exactly.
Am I right or wrong?
Possibly.
So I, I really think we need to, that's why I, I asked for the, the job analysis because I think we need to change our recruiting strategy and come up with a way to retain employees because you're going to continue to have a revolving door. It's not going to change.
And this is your finances.
Yes, it's the city finances. So I, I don't think, I mean, we really need to come up with a, a better strategy because it's hard to run a department with a bunch of temp agents going in and out the door. It, it just is. So we got to figure out a way to be able to retain the talent that we do have, and if that's making an adjustment in pay, I think the entry level is what, about $15?
Right above $16.
Four-year degree, been to college four years, $16.75, you're not going to retain. So I think we, we, we got to address a way to be able to fill these entry-level slots because that's, that's the day-to-day operation. They are the ones rolling their sleeves up, putting in that sweat equity. So we, we got to figure out that piece first. Now, I'm not opposed to these other analysts and all of these other positions, but right now, what's priority to me is how do we fill these entry-level positions to get, to get the work done? Those are my thoughts.
All right. Thanks, Senator, Counselor Tucker.
Yes, ma'am. How many positions do you have currently that's on the books that are not filled? In which positions are not filled?
Um, let's see. So we still have to fill the Revenue Manager position. One of the auditors that we hired in October left the end of December, so that is another vacancy that we have to fill. There are two buyer positions in the Purchasing Division that we have, that we're in process of filling. We have interviews, additional interviews slated for that this week. I'm trying to think. There is, uh, Collection Technician position.
And what do they do?
Uh, the Collection Technician is responsible for collecting lease payments, processing the liens for demolitions and lot clearings, and a large part of what they did in collections went away to fire an EMS when we outsourced that, the ambulance billing, so.
So the collections, they work on the fire and EMS side now?
No, 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 no. They still process the demolition, liens, the lot clearings. They do the bills for integrated wastes, for the landfill bills, the landfill bills, and they are, they were supposed to take over collecting the excise, being responsible for the excise taxes.
Okay. So we have four positions that are, unless you got more, that, is it five?
Two buyers.
Oh, yeah, two buyers. Is, is it more than five that's...
That's all that's coming to mind.
Budget Analyst.
Oh, Budget Analyst. There is an additional Budget Analyst position that's currently vacant. And so all of these positions that are vacant is what's allowing us to really not go over budget in terms of the temporaries that we do have. Because in addition to that, let me just say that when people leave, like I said previously, it takes more than one person to usually fill that role and perform the duties of that individual because there was just so much, so much institutional knowledge that that individual had. And so I have been gracious enough, well, I have been afforded by my former employees who have retired, they've been gracious to kind of come back and help out for a little bit to help us transition and try to keep these very important processes going while we, you know, fill these positions. But, you know, obviously, that's not a permanent thing, that's just a temporary use of some retire- that's not a permanent thing. That's just a temporary use of some retirees. But largely these vacancies have allowed us to not go over budget as a whole with the additional temporary employees. And, you know, I hear you keep saying, I, I've heard it, I guess I should say, more than once, that we need to fill these entry level employees, I mean, entry level positions. And, which is great. I mean, obviously you need people at that level to perform the work, but you also need people beyond the entry level to perform the more technical tasks. I, I will say, you know, in terms of implementing the system upgrades and implementing, making these improvements to the software system, a lot of that is falling on me. I am a technical person in nature. I mean, I, I probably should have been in IT as, as opposed to in financing. But at the end of the day, I mean, you do need people who, from a more technical standpoint, who can also carry out those technical duties and tasks that are just beyond the entry level. You need people that the entry level people can actually go to and count on as a resource for information and skills and expertise.
So we, we have two, two part-time workers from, you say, individuals that retired?
One comes intermittently. I mean, to really help with some of the annual processes. And I'm gonna put this out there and, only because I've received official notification today, but another one of my longtime employees is retiring.
So you've got to have seven, probably.
That person will be retiring in May, at the end of May.
So we need to fill seven positions. Okay. Um, one of the things that Councilor Davis had recommended a while ago, and I'm not sure if he still has that information, remember when we was talking about, um, the individual who has that firm that you can go to and get somebody that has the finance experience as, as temp employees instead of getting temp, temporary employees that don't have like financial background. It was like a specialized, um, firm that you can work with. Did, did you ever look into that when we had provided that information?
We have two temporary agencies under annual contract and I can engage those temporary agencies that we have on the contract to see if there are more individuals that they can, I guess, reach out to or send my way in terms of them having more of a financial background. But we've been utilizing human resources. I mean, I will say human resources, I mean, they, they'll turn around temporary employees to us fairly quickly. Because in a lot of it, particularly at the entry level, it's not rocket science. You don't necessarily need a finance degree to perform those, a lot of those tasks. It's really the more the professional level and the more technical tasks. It's not exactly, exactly entry level at the analyst level that I would really be interested in engaging some other organization to, um, bring someone on board. But, you know, a lot of this, quite frankly, could be avoided if I could actually advertise and hire for these positions. I mean, I'm not actually advertising for the, when we were trying to advertise for some of these temporary positions, it was actually recommended that we take those advertisements down until the compliance audit was complete. And we still have not re-advertised those temporary positions. So hopefully, you know, if these positions are approved as part of the budget, we'll actually be able to advertise them, not as temporary, but as full-time regular positions.
We gotta hit that. Mayor brought some?
Oh, I'm sorry. Who is, Bruce is on next.
Travis is trying to get in.
I guess we need the mayor to stay here to.
I can hold, I can hold for just a minute. Just leave me on. Travis is trying to get in. I'll, I'll hold and wait for Travis.
I guess I, I don't, I don't understand.
Councilor Chambers, you need to hit your light and I can get you on and I'm gonna have to turn some of these others off so that we can hear without the feedback. So those that I have to cut off, I'll apologize and I'll just urge you to hit your light again and we'll come back to you. Councilor Chambers?
No, it's not. He's, he turned me on, mayor. I do have a comment, but I think he was first.
Hit your light one more time. There you go.
So I don't understand how, um, you can recruit effectively with not advertising. I mean, so, I mean, would you just relying on the temp agency to fill the positions?
I've been relying on HR's assistance to help fill these temporary slots.
Is HR advertising?
There's, um, yes. The job is being advertised. There are, employees are applying for positions within other departments.
Just for clarification, Councilor Chambers, when you, the finance director made reference to some professional level temporary positions because that's what she was authorized to hire professional level temporary positions. And then, yes, we did temporarily advertise those positions and then they were removed. And I'll just say this about whether we're talking about a professional level temporary position or if we're talking about an entry level temporary positions. To recruit someone for a temporary position is very difficult. You can hire someone in a temporary position, but for a professional level position, let's say one of these positions as a revenue auditor, a revenue manager, an analyst, those are professional positions. Nobody's looking to work for you temporary in a professional position. They are looking for, it's, it's, because these are career-type positions. So they're not looking to work for you on a temporary basis. Now, yes, Human Resources has been able to assist the finance department in the entry level positions for temporary. Those are easy, easier because of the number of applicants that we receive for the multiple positions that we may have open administrative. We can assist, we can, if an applicant wasn't hired for one position, they may be looking for another position and they are willing to take a temporary position until they can get a regular full-time position either with the City of Columbus or some other organization.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. I mean, professional positions, yeah. I mean, it's hard to fill on a temp status.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. I just, my, my, my only thing is, you know, and I trust HR, I mean, I'm in HR, I do this every day. That's why I asked for the, the, the analysis, the job analysis and to evaluate the jobs and kind of see, you know, what, what needs to be done. But as far as the entry level positions, and I, and I understand that you need technical positions filled, but I, I, I still believe that the entry level is the, um, that's, yeah, that's the nucleus. I, I mean, I'm in retail, so I, I know how this work. And, and if we don't have cashiers out there, we not making no money. So, I mean, I, I get that, but I think we need to focus on our entry level slots and figure out a way to be able to retain them so that the day-to-day operations work can be done effectively and efficiently. Those are my thoughts.
All right, Councilor Huff.
Okay, Councilor Garrett and I have been over here talking for a while and I'm sure he's next up, so I'll let him make, make clarity on it. But we are discussing the part of the entry level, but a little bit above that to handle customer service for what she needs in her department. Listening to the city manager a few minutes ago, well, he didn't know I was listening, I was listening while he was talking to you. But I watched a show the other night and we need to have checks and balances is what she's asking for. You can't bring too much in from the outside because on this show the other night, a city managed to let a lady become the treasurer and comptroller and she stole $53 million from the city. So as we get her some help, we need to train and keep as many of our own people as we can. I know we're gonna have to do some outside sourcing, but kind of limit that so that we can maintain whose, whose hands are in the pot so that we'll have our tax base in place. But that's, that's where I am. I'll turn it over to Councilor Garrett because I don't want to steal this thunder.
Councilor Garrett?
And Mr. City Attorney, you may have to clarify the procedural manner, but basically what I want to accomplish, I'd like to make a, I'm not sure if it'll be a substitute motion to make the add for the purchasing analyst, basically revenue analyst down. So revenue analyst, the revenue auditor, and the tax and licensing clerks and the purchasing analyst.
Be, it'd be a substitute?
Basically from revenue analyst down. So we would be only cutting assistant finance director and administrative assistant.
You can make that as a substitute.
Okay, well, I'll make that as a substitute.
All right.
It's gonna be revenue analyst going down.
Get your light instead of yelling across the barnyard.
That's what that was new.
So it would be.
I would never say that. I would never say that.
It, it would be basically down from revenue analyst to be revenue analyst, revenue auditor, tax and licensing clerks and their three of those are new, and then purchasing analyst.
Can I just say that the administrative assistant was tasked with performing the segregation of duties that was recommended by Acuitas?
Can you repeat that?
So the administrative assistant was tasked, or is tasked, I should say, with performing those segregate, segregated duties that was recommended by Acuitas. So this person doesn't actually process, they're the ones that's taking in the mail, opening the mail, distributing the mail, logging the mail in terms of the payments that are coming in. And so it was recommended by the outside auditors that we have some segregation in terms of who's taking in the payments, who's processing the payments, who's logging the payments. And so that administrative assistant is the person that's doing that. I mean, just as a point of clarification.
Would you, excuse me, would you rather only have two tax and licensing nu, new clerks and have that administrative assistant?
I would rather have all three.
Okay, so if that was.
But I, I mean, if you.
She's better, you're better off getting a, a temp to do what you're talk, you could get a temp to do that, but this stuff he's talking about.
Have a temp. She's leaving on Friday.
I, I get that. But you gotta have some help. And I, I, you know, I, I think what Councilor Garrett is, is, is proposed is, is, is a better option for getting the work done. I mean, this is your money, business license. What he's proposing will help protect all of that. And, and administrate, we, you know, do a temp for that, as far as I'm concerned.
And we can revisit that, obviously.
Yeah, at another time.
So there is a substitute motion and a second. Councilor Davis to the motion, to the substitute motion? Okay. All right. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. The substitute motion has passed.
So that, that went from three licensed tax clerks to two. Is that the substitute?
Yes.
And takes out the assistant finance director.
And the administrative assistant.
All right.
Or no, or did we keep the administrative assistant?
Mayor, can I just say thank you because we need to get this work done. I mean, we do. And so I, I, I just want to thank the council for giving the finance department an opportunity to be successful.
All right. I, I agree. I think that's what we. That is right. It's mid-year. We'd have to first entertain a motion to remove all of those requests. Is that right? Or is these are just substitutes?
This was a substitute for, was it two tax licensing clerks? Three, leave the three?
So since that was approved, that action is done. It is, it's been substituted.
All right. It's amended.
Okay.
May I approve of item two?
All right, motion and second to approve item two. Any discussion on that one? All right, please put it on the screen. Councillors, you can enter your votes. Councilor Davis surrendered quickly.
Okay, can I just say thank you very much?
Yes, you may.
And the RFP responses are due back on February 19th.
Thank counsel for their deliberation. Councilor Davis?
Yeah, I just, I, I didn't want to speak to the motion, mayor, but I, I guess I could have. But I do, I do just want a couple of things that were talked about during the conversation. I was at the bottom of the list, so here's my opportunity. But I am, you know, the city manager, the whole key here is making progress, okay, and being productive. Councilor Chambers made some great points. He really did. A lot of the stuff that we talked about happens at the customer service level. And I certainly wouldn't be one that would advocate to create positions, to move positions around and then have to fill the other positions. I hope that's not what's happening. I, I do remember the audit reports that came back and there were recommendations in there, okay. But the key thing and the last one that came out was the temporaries. And I think we re-resolved that. But it was brought up about, Councilor Tucker mentioned about the agency. One of the questions I wanted to ask is what temporary agencies are we using? Who are they? Ask the HR director. I don't know the name of the, those companies, but the HR director can speak to that.
They are both local agencies.
What's their names?
They are both local agencies. One of them is global. And, Councilor, I cannot think of the second one that we have. I just can't think of the second one.
You just call up and they send people over.
Say again now?
You just call up, tell them what you need, they send people over.
Yeah, it's, it's not as simple as that, but we do call.
Okay. Well, well, look, let me just recommend there are, and you know this, there are, it sounds like these are not the agencies, but there are professional agencies out there that deal directly in this area. Their expertise, their employees nationwide, and they'll come in as temporaries and if they like it, you can hire them. They're there, they're temps to hire, they're temps that you can hire. There are agencies out there and I've talked to people and they've said that they could help our city government with some of these problems. But, you know, are we using them would be the question. Those temporaries was the key. Those temporaries was the key focus in all these audit reports, whether internal or external. Those were the key concerns. And we've given you the opportunity to fill those spots full-time, especially at the customer service level. But, you know, I want to highlight this, the area that we've been focusing on is the revenue department. I do believe in the report, and I've checked with our auditors about the assessment, the procurement and the purchasing department does need help, I understand.
Sure.
They need help. But the key thing that we talked about was in revenue collections in the revenue department. There's eleven people in there, and it all started at the entry level where Counselor Chambers was talking about. So that's all I wanted to say.
So if you'll share in an email or text the name of who you have in mind, and then we'll see what we can do, because, you know, if we've got two, I mean, on some firms, our techs and others, we may have three to five. So, I mean, you know, we won't push the locals out, but we will have other options. So if you'll share that, that'd be great.
Mayor Protim Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. If there's nothing further, I would like to call up item six. This is Fort Benning Road.
We've got one other counselor, I think, to this, Counsel Tucker, is it to this mode?
Item? I'm sorry, but I agree, we will pull that up.
Item six is?
Counsel.
And it was in reference to the RFP, just so I can understand what it's actually saying. It's saying request and proposal to establish a contract for consulting services. Is that saying that we're looking for somebody to draft the contract language, or we're actually seeking for business license tax collection services, revenue collection services? What does, what does that mean? Does that mean that we're looking, the RFP, is it for them to develop a contract, to go back and do another RFP? Like, what is?
For the performance of the services.
So it's actually for, for the services? Okay. I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. We've had a request from a couple of counselors to pull up item number six, rezoning at Fort Benning Road. I know Martha and has been waiting.
Okay, this is a zoning.
People to educate.
A zoning public hearing for property at twenty-three-eleven Fort Benning Road. Go from general commercial to residential office. Recommended for approval, Sealy Family Holdings Columbus Tech petition. Are there any questions around the table?
I'd just like to say real quick, we all are familiar with Columbus Tech's project they have on Fort Benning Road, and land was donated by the Pease Oil family. This is another piece of property that's being, that's being, is connected to that piece of property. They want to get the zonings the same so they can continue their efforts to educate and provide CDL training in Columbus and other opportunities for folks. I think this is called the Vector Center, if that's right, yeah, okay. So anyway, just, I don't know of any opposition, but I don't think there is, but anyway.
Counsel Chambers?
I would like to recuse myself from, I currently serve on the board of directors. Oh, no vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
First reading.
Oh, okay. I overlooked that piece. Yeah, two weeks, right, right, right.
Counsel Hough, is that to this item?
Yes.
Mayor Protim, you said this sits next to the training center? The property sits next to where they're training now, the CDL? Okay. I'm fine, I was just wondering location.
It is not, the parcel we're rezoning now is not abutting up to the CDL, there is a parcel in between them, but the intent is to combine them all with three, one parcel, because they have to be almost all the same thing.
The same side of the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
All right. And I think that's it. No more questions.
Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this item? I don't see any hands, Mayor. We'll vote on it in two weeks at a five-thirty meeting, is that right, Ms. Clerk? Two weeks at a five-thirty? Nine o'clock AM, sorry.
All right, thank you, appreciate your patience.
All right, if we can go back up the list to item three, Mayor. This is a three-dash-five amendment for one-hundred-thousand square feet and larger establishments with an alcohol license is ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve this item, any discussion? All right, hearing none, if you would, please post it on the screen, and counselors, any of your votes, please? Counsel Davis says yes. And that passes.
The next item is the proposed substitute for the internal auditor structure at section two-dash-six-eight of the code. It's been discussed, I think, a lot among the counselors, but if any other questions around the table now is the time to.
Counsel Hickey?
I'd like to make a, pull the, my original motion on that, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt the substitute.
All right, it's motion second to substitute, new motion in its place. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that substitute is approved.
That passes. Okay.
We have to vote to pass it, right? Because we just substituted a motion.
Yeah, you can go ahead and pass the whole thing, that was the.
So we'll, motion and second to approve. If you would, please put it on the screen. Counselor Davis says? Yes.
All right.
Counsel Tucker, is that to this mode, this item?
Yes.
Counsel Tucker?
Since this, this is approved, and I want to thank Counselor Allen and Counselor Davis and Counselor Hickey for working so hard, and also our attorneys for getting the language together. Thank you. I also want to make a motion to add those two additional council members, one being Counselor Kogle and the other Counselor Chambers.
All right, there's a motion and a second for those two counselors to be added. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, that is the council committee provided by the new ordinance, and when they meet, they can elect a chair that will perform certain duties under the ordinance.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Mayor, we've got a couple more zoning hearings, eleven-twenty-six Thirtieth Street. They want to go from neighborhood commercial to residential multifamily, Jefferson Sanders petition. They are here, recommended approval, any questions around the table?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right, anybody out there want to be heard on the Jefferson petition? Don't see any hands. We'll vote in two weeks at nine o'clock. Thanks, sir.
Albert, thanks for your patience.
Yeah. Thank you very much for all that patience. We got an item now, Mr. Gibson is here, I think, with the applicant for four-two-five Third Avenue, historic district going to residential office with conditions, recommended approval with conditions, Counselor Kogle's District, LRC Mansion West. Any questions around the table?
No, sir.
All right, petitioner's here, anybody else want to be heard? Don't see any. We'll vote on that in two weeks, Mr. Gibson. Thanks, sir. Mayor, we've got, Mr. Gibson's here on this next item, the special exception, this is a public hearing for an oil change facility at nine-twenty Veterans Parkway, recommended for approval. You can take a vote on that if council is ready.
See if anybody wants to comment.
Does anybody want to be heard? Mr. Gibson's here. Okay.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion on that item? All right, if you'll put it on the screen, counselors, please register your votes. Not a verbal yes, Counselor?
That approved?
It's approved.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gibson got approval on that, too. Thank you. And then the last item, Mayor, on the formal agenda, is the First Amendment to the stadium sublease requested by Counselor Davis and others to swap particular seats for.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, please post it on the screen, and counselors can enter that. All right, that's approved.
That's approved. The only other request we have is for executive session on potential litigation and real estate acquisition.
All right, we'll move on to the public agenda. Our public agenda, you'll have five minutes, and if you're unable to complete your thoughts in that five minutes, we'll give you another three at the end of the clerk's agenda. Ms. Teresa Alameen called and canceled, so we'll move to Mr. Timothy Veals regarding concerns about property owners and landlords needing to clean their properties and trash the streets of the neighborhood. Mr. Veals, welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. My main concern about my neighborhood there, you know, I've been out here quite a few times complaining about the same property. Really concerned about ten thirty-nine Brooks Road, Columba, Georgia, three-one-nine-oh-three. It's an empty lot set between ten forty-four and ten sixteen. I've been complaining about it for years, the lot can grow all the way out to the street. Everybody putting their, their dummy trash right there. It's got a big pile by the dump truck pile to leave. It's got about ten or fifteen tires right there in the street. Yet another lot between nine-ten and eight thirty-four. It ain't quite got there, everybody getting there. You know, this on, this on, on Brook Street, Brook Road, and I've been calling about it for years. You know, it's amazing though, why y'all can't contact these people, make they clean up their property, do whatever they gotta do. And my main concern, too, ten thirty-nine Brooks Road, you got Head Street, Red Olive Ben Dry, you got Once and Row Red Olive Ben Dry. Coming out of Ben Dry going into Once and Row, it seem like it's a camera there, I don't know, it look like a camera, but they put out so many trash that I don't see y'all mustn't using the camera. I've been arguing about one on Head Street, I guess it won't do no good because it's dirty, trash out. Also on Head Street, what the ditch is so big and wide, you know, they put everything in there, put tires, bags. I was complaining about one time, you need to put a big sewer in there, because when it raining real hard, y'all see the trash that come down through there. And I've been crying, get some people to come down with me, no bagging me up, but I don't know where the Geller to commune or what the deal is, but as far as literal route, people clean up their property, I'd be the second to do a better job. Now, was it a good idea if you came up with the dump truck? I'm quite sure that was a good safety hazard, too. They can't put their trash in the trash can, it just said trash can over full, they put the bag on the ground, ain't nobody picking up that? Now, they got that trash all over the street. Now, we got more trash than had before. I tell my, I tell my, you need to, I tell my somewhere enough, need to find out how to get them, give them a ticket or something, because that don't make no sense. You know, you got a big old trash can, now, I understand sometimes it might get over full, you know, everything might not get in, but don't they want to leave on the ground for weeks? What will happen? You know, now, this, this is all Ben Dry, Head Street, Karen Avenue, and Brook Road, and got Harvard. I want too many go around Harvard too many, so I'm quite sure it might be about the same. Just that little area right there, not on there, just Ben Dry itself. I see trash out there, been out there for years, in the same spot. You know, ain't nobody picking it up. And then, too, a lot of landlord, when they put somebody out, they put them out their house, okay, now they got all this little loose stuff laying around. Ain't nobody picking up that? You know, I tell my, I tell my, it's a shame that, you know, we had, you know, some people had to live like that. You know, you know, I read them, read them all over there because I really can't afford to go nowhere else, you know, I had to make, do what I got. I tell my, the city needs to step up by this. I tell my, it probably look too bad. Not only that, you know, you got coming down Ben Dry, you got, you got Yum, you got Lakeside, going around to the school, you know, them three, I tell my, it look like a hawk pen over there. You know, it's a shame, now, I tell my, you got a lot of area over there off of St. Louis too, you got dogs that run all over the street. I tell my, it's a shame, I tell my, I don't know what can be done about it, you know, but it not all the city park, you know, a lot of home owners got a lot to do with it, too. I think it'd help a lot if we make the homeowner clean their property up. I think that would, would help a bit a lot. And then, too, and for the city, while y'all, y'all need to get on these people, they need to keep their property clean, you know, halfway clean at least. I tell my, too many, it's a shame, when I, when my Ken folk come here, you know, they called me, said they might be coming, I gotta go over there and pick up, make sure it look halfway decent, I'll call them, I'd be ashamed when they come and see, see a street looking like that. You know, that's how I feel about it, you know, I know everybody don't feel the same way. Now, this is another thing surprised me, this here on Once and Row, seven thirty-one, Once and Row, this apartment.
Mr. Veals, I hope you'll forgive me, but we've got you, you passed the five minutes. We'll have to ask you to come back after the clerk's agenda for three more minutes if you need it. All right? Thank you, sir. Counsel Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I know that we, you know, have cameras out in different locations. I'm continuing to get a complaint from one of my constituents at the intersection of Hunt and Langdon. We, I put in a request before to go out and pick up some trash there at that intersection, and of course, somebody dumped it there, and, you know, Public Works went out and took care of that and picked it up. But we got somebody still coming through there doing the same thing.
Yeah.
So I was wondering, I don't know how often y'all move the cameras around, and I was just wondering when, you know, it's possible, can we get a camera set up over there in that area and try to catch the person that's dumping over there?
And so, Counselor, we, we've got a couple of other areas ahead of that, that we are moving the portable cameras around, and you can see the Mayor Protim over there, he has been trying to get us to move to a location as well, and he's on the list. I don't know if they, well, we don't want to announce it, but when they're gonna be there, but hopefully they, we'll, I'll make sure that gets on that list. And Isaac Drive and Matilda, there's another area that I know you probably go through there, and it's terrible.
And let me ask you this question, so when the cameras identify a violator, what is the process then? Do, do, by the tag number, or?
Yeah, by tag number, we're gonna, you know, and.
Issue a citation basis?
And bring you court. And we're urging the judges, a minimum of one thousand dollar fine.
And so if a private citizen want to put up their own counter, how do we address that issue?
They shouldn't put it on City Right Away, but you, you know.
Like, it's on their property?
Yeah, it can reach, and if they got a tag number and a description.
Okay.
For example, I've been to court.
Okay.
Personally, you know, on Isaac Drive and Matilda, and I went and stood before the judge with the guy over there who was dumping, from a picture that came from someone. And, and the judge fined him $1,000, but before the judge could fine him, he started telling about his boss. Because he didn't want that $1,000 fine. But if you got a pitcher, I'm a witness, I've been to court with the pitcher. And we got him.
All right.
And the police department has been very good, we called another one here, they lived in Phoenix City. I think they were knocking on the door in Phoenix City that same day. Our police department, you know, through Phoenix City's police, so a pitcher will do it. But I want to say to Mr. Veal, I'm gonna have them pull the streets that he named Head Street and all those streets. And we will do a work order, but it will be helpful. And I know, you know, people are not, they're hesitant about getting in the middle of something, especially on some of the streets that he named. You know, but, but if they, if they, if they could help us, that would be great. With a tag number or, you know, a couple of pitchers. And that would be helpful, but otherwise, they need to call 311 so we can come out and, and clean up on those streets. But we will make sure those streets are sent out so that Public Works can come through and service those streets.
Thank you. And Ms. City Manager, it is your agenda now.
So, Mr. Mayor, first I've got a Dinglewood Heart Grant Extension.
Second.
Move approval items, grants one through four.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve items one through four. Is there any one that anyone would like pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, if you'll put it on the screen. Now, remember, you're gonna enter one vote, but that, you're approving all four of those items. Do that three more times.
So mayor, on this first one, the city didn't wanna, didn't put any money in. The Friends of Dragonfly Trail even paid the match for that grant when we did it. So this is an extension. The Firehouse Subs Grant is $38,695. Fund for the purchase of a mini ambulance and stretcher to replace an existing mini ambulance and stretcher at the end of its useful life for the Fire EMS. And the third grant is a $52,500 grant with no match for Family Connection. And the final one is for Fire EMS, it's a drone and training for use of that drone for Fire EMS. It's $37,500. Then I've got purchases, mayor, and I want to pull this first purchase for paratransit buses for Metra. And I did send you all some email about an executive order calling for a freeze on federal grants. Came out late yesterday, Monday, effective today. And directions for the freeze are vague and a bit confusing, and so we want to be cautious or careful. Because we have limited information, we're not clear on how this announcement impacts spending and obligations regarding federally funded programs and services. Hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have some clarification on this and other federal funding. So that is why I'm asking, or pulling it for delay tonight until we get more information on the executive order. And I want you to know, I've also asked the finance director to hold off on any commitments involving federal funds until we get additional information on this executive order. The last thing, we just don't want to obligate federal funds during the freeze, and then those dollars are disallowed when they audit saying that, you know, the president had an executive order and you did this during the window of the executive order, and we're not gonna allow that. So we just want to get more information before we deal with these federal dollars.
Okay.
So that one's delayed. Item B is mobile inmate tracking system for the sheriff's office. This is $83,721, and the sheriff is gonna be using it to streamline correction facility operations, improve auditing and compliance hit counts and so forth, so on.
There's a motion, second to approve item B of the purchases. Any discussion on that? All right, please put it on the screen, and councilors, you can vote.
The next one is consulting services for recycling facility.
There's a motion and a second to approve the remaining purchases, C and D. Would anybody like either one of those pulled? Okay, so we will vote only on item D. One Chevrolet Tahoe. Any discussion on item D? All right, please put it on the screen, and councilors, you can vote.
So mayor, on the consulting services for recycling, you know, we had a setback with our recycling vendor, Pratt. You know, they, they just canceled suddenly without much of a notice. And the equipment that we had in the recycling center was their equipment, very expensive equipment, millions of dollars is what it cost. And so we were left, as you recall, for a couple of weeks there, we struggled. And then we did an agreement with M-Waste. Our recyclings are collected, taken to the recycling center, and M-Waste take those recyclings, and they transport them to Alabama, I believe it's Montgomery. And we're really not getting any revenue from that recycling effort, but we are recycling and keeping those things out of our landfill. And they're going to Montgomery, it's with M-Waste, and we're continuing that temporary agreement with M-Waste. But we need a consultant, and we need to figure out how to get control of our recycling situation. I mean, I'd like to purchase the equipment, really, and, and get back to doing it. The equipment may be, costs more than we can afford. You know, millions of dollars is that recycling equipment that goes in that building. And so we need a consultant to help us figure out, you know, is it worth investing in and taking control ourselves? Or we need to go back out and do a contract with someone else to come in, like an M-Waste, and they're doing it temporarily. And so that is why we need to bring a consultant, so we can figure all of this out. And, and I say to you again, this is another example of when a vendor abruptly bails, they leave. We didn't have the equipment, it's their equipment, and we were at, I mean, we just, we were left out there. And so I, and, and in no situation, whether it's a swim, aquatic center, or revenue collection, or animal care control, we gotta figure out how to protect ourselves and have a backstop in these situations where we contract out.
Councillor Davis.
Yeah, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Was, correct me if I'm wrong, but did a fire take place somewhere in that transition, or the equipment was being taken out?
I think some, there was some small fire, I don't know, yeah, she's here, they can tell you about it, but there was some kind of fire, yes.
Did it damage the facility?
I don't, I'll let her answer that, I don't think so, yeah.
When they were removing their equipment, some of their equipment caught on fire. But we were able to get rid, get away with the fire, and they just took their equipment on out. But there was no damage done to the recycling center.
So we, we know that that world of recycling is changed and steadily changing.
Every day.
Every day, and sometimes they take stuff, sometimes they don't. So what you're asking us, if you want to get a consultant to figure out the numbers, if it's...
What it would cost us to get this facility up and running to where we are in control of that facility, and not allow a vendor to have that control and to have us back in the same position that we're in now.
And councillor, you know, there's a cost that we, when we look at the life of our landfill and what we keep out, the quantities. You know, we may not be getting revenue from M-Waste, for example, but there's a benefit to us.
We sort, right? It's basically a sorting center. You sort the materials.
That's what it was originally built and designed for, yes.
And then who comes and picks up the materials?
At the time, it was the vendor.
The, before?
Before, when, when we had a vendor in that facility.
That was part of what they were doing. Okay.
And...
And they would transport it to the end user.
So that's really what the vendor is doing now, is transporting it, and then they're sorting it in Montgomery or Atlanta, right?
Correct.
But we just want to see what it would take to do it all.
Well, we need...
And then we would have to get it hauled.
No, so the vendor that was in there part two, where we are now, owned the equipment inside the facility, the sorting equipment. Right now, what we have is just an empty building, there's no equipment in there. We're wanting to put equipment in this building, so whether we're operating it or we put it out as an RFP for somebody else to operate it, the equipment belongs to the city of Columbus.
Well, and, and I, you know, I initially wanted you to purchase the equipment, but when you told me what it cost...
Yes.
I mean, I believe 10 million...
We're looking anywhere between 10 to 15 million.
I mean, it's...
To outfit this facility.
We just, you know, we gotta figure it out. They don't recycle. Well, we'll let the consultant figure all that stuff out. But I, I mean, you know, because at one time, we looked at Fort Benin as well.
All right, so how long is it gonna take you to do this?
Fort Benin, then.
For the consultant.
How long is it coming to get a detailed report, an analysis on it?
From the consultant? I, I mean, we've already, we've already put out the RFP, and we identified the one consultant, the best consultant for our submittals. I would say anywhere between a year, about a year. Because they've got to be able to identify the equipment, price out the equipment, the equipment is built to order, it's custom. It's not like you can go and purchase it off the shelf because of the size of our facility.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion to approve D in the purchases? I'm sorry, C on the purchases. All right, motion, second to approve item C for the recycling facility. Any discussion? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and councilors, if you would, enter your votes.
Yes.
All right, and that's, that's approved.
And mayor, that concludes my agenda, but I'm gonna consider this an announcement regarding the transition of animal care and control to PAWS Humane. And I've asked, yeah, yeah, she's here. If you'll pass those out, and then maybe put one on the overhead so the public can see it. And I'm just gonna walk through this right quick as an announcement. So would you help her, please? And put one on the overhead.
You might want to mention the emergency purchase that was made, I know the warden is here.
Yeah, the emergency purchase was for a rotisserie oven that he needed, you know, so. No, we don't need to prove that.
Don't have to prove it, but that, that was approved and spent.
So mayor and council, and, and she's putting on the overhead because I want the public to see it. And I'm just gonna walk through, and we've got, I've got Courtney Pierce here, who's the executive director of PAWS, and Michelle Main, who is deputy director of Public Works. But transition of Animal Care and Control Center, PAWS Humane, Inc., the transition of animal services from Animal Care and Control to PAWS Humane, Inc., becomes effective February 1, 2025. For assistance during this transition or in need of animal services during normal hours of operations, call 311. You still call 311. Or 653-4512, prompt number one. Service hours of operations, Monday and Tuesday, 1 o'clock PM to 5 o'clock PM. Wednesday through Saturday, 10 o'clock AM to 5 o'clock PM. After hours requests for assistance, call 911 for assistance, just as you do now. There will be no interruption of service for animal calls to include, but not limited to, no interruption of calls, not limited to stray animal calls, aggressive animal calls, animal attack calls for both hu, human and/or other animals, neglected animal report calls, surrenders, adoptions are still available at the current CACC building and at PAWS Humane, Inc., all other animal calls that perhaps are not necessarily domestic in nature, such as pet snakes, rabbits, ferrets, birds, et cetera. Please contact Ms. Courtney Pierce, executive director of PAWS Humane, Inc., regarding any additional questions you may have in regards to the services provided during this transition. The number for Courtney Pierce, 706-565-0035. Or you can email her at CPierce, CPierce, P-I-E-R-C-E, at pawshumane.org, CPierce@pawshumane.org. Or you may contact a contract administrator with questions, concerns, or complaints. And that will be mcginnis, M-C-G-I-N-N-I-S dot donna, D-O-N-N-A, at columbusgea.org. Or call at 706-225-3119. That's her number. And so our team will be working with Courtney for 30, 60, 90 days, whatever she needs. Courtney will be calling the shots effective February 1. Michelle will be there to work with her and the team. There are 13 employees that are still there. They will be there for 30, 60, 90 days. Michelle will work with Courtney for 30, 60, 90 days to allow for a smooth transition. And though Michelle will be there, and she's the deputy director of Public Works, Courtney is in charge. And so she will be directing our employees through or with Michelle as a leader of our animal care situation. And so we are going to make sure that it is, it is a smooth handoff. And, and so that's where we are, and that's what transition looks like. I just wanted to share that for the public.
Councillor Kogel.
Oh, I just had, I have not anything to direct at this. It's not directed at this, it's just...
So...
We'll get councillor Crabbe, is that to this item?
Thank you, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thanks, thank Courtney and the other animal rescues. I've been kind of on the sidelines and on the outskirts of, you know, supporting animal control. I'm gonna get choked up here. But I got thrown right in the middle of it a couple of weeks ago when I went to do a move out on one of my properties, and they had left a dog behind. And you, you stand there, and it's, I've been doing property management for 35 years, and this has never happened to me before. And so I didn't know what to do, so I called Ethelyn Riley, and I, what do I do? I would, I was, and it's amazing that the network that they have. Ethelyn came over, she started just, okay, you do this, you do this, you do this, I'm gonna call these. And they just, they just... and they just, they just helped me to stay on track and know how to help this dog and get it all taken care of. It's an amazing, just, I, I, I thought they were amazing, but now I know they're amazing, the way they were able to help me in that situation, and I just wanted to publicly thank them all. Courtney was able to take her into PAWS, she's up for adoption, she's adorable, if I didn't babysit dogs on a regular basis, she would be mine, but her name is Sweet Caroline because she's a Caroline dog, Carolina dog, and I would love, love, love for her to find a permanent home, and I thank you, Courtney, and all the animal care community for helping me in that situation.
Thank you.
So, I was just going to say, this is going to be on our website tonight or tomorrow morning, and we're going to put it up, place it on social media, and I wanted to do it here and put on the overhead so that citizens will, will see it, and, but we look forward to working with Courtney, it's been a great working relationship, and Courtney, I don't know if you want to say something or not, but thank you.
No, I just wanted to thank you for, for helping us with this transition, and also Michelle and the rest of the negotiating team, it's been wonderful, and I, we look forward to the challenge ahead and working together to get this done.
Yeah, the entire team has, on both sides, you know, been great, and, and, but, you know, Michelle has been working very closely as a coach here, and, and Assistant Chief Kennedy is a superstar as well, so want to thank the two coaches here, but the entire team, awesome, so thank you, and we look forward to the smooth transition.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, I have a request, and, and I, I can do it in the form of a verbal resolution, and you may say, no, I don't need that, but what I, what I would like to ask you to do is, you know that we're in the process of, there are several council members that are looking at, there's an ordinance that's going through a process right now, we're looking at crafting and working together to create a sports and entertainment authority. I would like to ask you and your department, I know that there's job postings and stuff that's happening, I don't want that to be counterproductive or counterconflicting, which it could be perceived as that, I'm not saying that you cannot take resumes and stack them, but maybe at one time, they can be processed and they could be a potential executive director, I don't know, but I do know there's an appetite right now to integrate our, some of our facilities into the civic center in the form of a sports and entertainment authority. My, my request would be to ask the executive administration, your department, to assist and to help to integrate that and to make it all work, and to, to comment so we can make sure that every, we're not missing anything on this, but I think at the end of the day, as I've stated before, the goal is to seek more productivity and a better output in our facilities, I think we can do it, and I don't want anybody saying that they've been left out, we, we have been talking about this for a while, but there is a process that's going on, and, and right now, I'm starting to see two different channels, and I, I don't think that that's a good thing to do at this point, and at the same time, we're in a year of transition in certain areas, and when you start talking about leadership roles, I think that, you know, that, that may be a topic for a subject for potential development of leadership teams in the future, so I want to continue to work through the process, but I, I don't want to have any counterconflicting with it, that's, that's not a good idea. I talked to my colleagues, I think there's enough support to do that, and, but I still think there's some things that would like to be done, there's some meetings going on now, there's some Q and A that we'd like to have, and we would like the, your administration to be integral to help integrate this potential change, if, if the council sees that, they would like to see that happen in Columbus.
Well, and that's fine, and I want to learn more about what you're trying to do, because I'm, I'm not clear at this point, but I will say, you know, there have been some positions advertised, we, I, you know, I've told Deputy City Manager Goodwin, we're not going to hire a director, because we're going to wait, but all of those other service positions, we are going to hire, you know, but we're not going to hire any leadership, we're going to hire the people that...
Keep it running on an operation, I understand, I know you have an interim director, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about that, but...
Yeah, I understand.
Anything that might kind of...
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, Counselor Kogan?
Mr. City Manager, I, I have a request from some residents who are located in the UPT district over by the proposed pickleball court, and I just wanted to give you a heads-up slash request, that there is a request for a quiet zone where the railroad crosses Third Avenue between 16th and 17th Street and Fifth, and then, or Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue between 16th Street and 17th Street, there's already supplemental safety measure, safety measures at those locations with the crossing arms and the gates, but I'm just going to probably be sending that your way, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads-up.
Okay, that's good.
That, that area, there's some residential there, as well as the pickleball courts that are coming in, and I think there's a community garden right there as well, so they're just requesting a little bit of quiet. I also wanted to bring back up the soccer resolution, because I know the city attorney has been working with Chuck Palmer on some of the federal and the state regulations, and I think he's got a lot of that wrapped up, so if it needs to be a resolution going forward, or just a request that we proceed with the MOU and the lease to go forward with that, with that soccer complex over at the farmer's market.
Yeah, I don't know if, I...
But if we can do that now, while in the background, Mr. Palmer is, is working on, I, I think he's got the, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, but I think he's got support from the state, and he's just wrapping up the federal burbage, if you will, and then everything else seems like it's good, but while, while he's doing that, if we can work on the MOU and the lease so that it is a seamless presentation, presentation, since we are battling a little bit of time here with the World Cup coming in, and if we, if we miss that window, it's not a good situation.
Well, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Palmer and try and expedite what we can, I know he's going to try to get...
Does that have to be a motion?
Try to get some favorable language out of the HUD office that has those regulations, where we got the money to do demolition, and it'll be an either-or, probably with a MOU or a lease, but, yeah, we, we know time is of the essence.
Does that need to be a motion to move forward with that, or just...
Not right now.
Just direction?
So I just want to be clear now, so you, he has gotten something from HUD?
No, we hope that he will get a favorable reaction, but we don't know yet, and it'll be a MOU or a lease if it's doable.
Yeah.
But I'd rather not wait for that to be, like, I, I, and I think that's the, the director, the consensus of my colleagues too, of we would like to have that MOU and that, or that lease agreement contingent on the approval from, from the work.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Just so that it is seamless, and that it's not, we're waiting for HUD approval, or we're waiting for Mr. Palmer's approval, and then we work on the, the MOU or the lease. It should be done concurrently.
Well, we will be guided by you, Mr. City Attorney, and...
Yeah, it's going to be an either-or, but we can certainly work on a draft.
Yeah, and, and of course, you heard me mention about, you know, hopefully we'll have better information on the February efforts that are going right now, and hopefully, hopefully that, that won't last long, I, I hope certainly about the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I mean, after speaking with, with Mr. Palmer, I, I'm, I'm not sure that there's going to be that much time of in-between, so I think if the time, like I said, time is of the essence here, and the longer we drag this out, the, the longer that this is going to be, become an issue, and we're going to run into some time, timeline, so I would ask that, that happen now, and then that way, when Mr. Palmer wraps that up, we can have a seamless transition.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure councilor member, a few weeks ago, we asked the Board of Honor to look at naming the Public Safety Building after former mayor-in-chief Jim Wetherington. Since his passing, unfortunately, that was not able, we're not able to occur, the clerk and I have talked about asking the Board of Honor to do, to reschedule a meeting, and I'd like to ask council to vote or to concur that we named that building in honor of, in memory of Jim Wetherington, the Public Safety Building, so I'd make that in form of a motion.
Okay, there's a motion second to approve the renaming, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk, I believe it's...
Rachel.
Your agenda.
And so, Mayor, just a quick note to that point, and I think that's, that's a good thing, because we're going to be looking at some renovations at the Public Safety Building, and we talked to you today, Mayor, about, Mayor Protem, about the signage, and so I think with that happening, we can address the sand out front of the Public Safety Building as well to do what we need to do.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the clerk's agenda, we have, excuse me, item one is an email from Mrs. Auden resigning from her seat.
All right, it's a motion that'd be received with regrets, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? It's approved.
Move to excuse Mr. Thomas.
Motion second to approve the resolution excusing Counselor Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that, she's excused.
Item three, we have minutes of various boards to be received.
Is there a motion to receive the minutes?
Second.
All right, motion second to receive the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
All right, next we have board appointments, item four, our council's appointments are ready for confirmation, for the Historic and Architectural Review Board, we have the nomination of Alan Klein, and he can be confirmed.
Second.
Motion second for confirmation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments, and any nominations would be listed for the following meeting, we have the Board of Tax Assessors, we have the passing of Trey Carmack, which left a seat vacant, and Counselor Crabbe is nominating Doug Druff, excuse me, Jeff Coate to fill the unexpired term, and we will bring this back for confirmation in February. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have the seat of Alfred Hayes Jr., who resigned, and Counselor Crabbe is nominating Alisa Neal to fill this unexpired term. For the Personnel Review Board, we have the seats of Dennis Walsh, Willie Billfield, and Donna Baker, two of these members were actually appointed to regular member seats, and we still need nominees for these positions. Next, we have the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority, and that seat has actually been vacant for quite a while now, so we will need a nominee for that. At the end of our agenda, we have several upcoming board appointments, all of these will actually expire in the month of March, most of them are council appointments, but we do have a few for the mayor, and then for the land bank, we receive the nominees for these positions from the authority, and then council confirms, but we will be listing these at the first meeting in February to receive nominees, and that is all we have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Doug Jeff Coate is currently on the Board of Zoning Appeals, so do you need to receive a resignation letter from him before we appoint, or does, or can I just tell you that we need to appoint a replacement for him on that board? He's on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we've, we're moving him to the Board of Tax Assessors.
He should probably submit a letter.
I have one for that, I just want to... I have one for...
For the zoning appeals?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Counselor Crabbe, probably the easiest thing would be for him to submit his resignation, because we would actually have to reach out to him and get, you know, see which board he prefers to serve on, we just have to have some kind of documentation so that we can bring it to council for any action.
I'll, I'll text him and ask him to resign from the Board of Appeals, because he has told me in a text that he, that he would take the tax assessors, that's why I nominated him, so I'll get him to write a resignation letter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Counselor Huff?
Okay, if he's stepping down, I would like to nominate Saron Lakey.
We, I will actually list that down whenever his seat is listed, because first, we will have to list his resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals at one meeting, and then we'll be able to receive nominees at the following, but I will make note of that, counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we did have a request to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation, and I think property acquisition.
Real estate acquisition.
Real estate acquisition, we've got a motion to go into executive session, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we have been in executive session, we discussed litigation and property acquisition and disposment, dispos, disposal, oh, well, getting rid of property, I'll turn it over to...
Disposition.
Thank you, city, city attorney.
All right, Mayor, we've discussed the claim of Dickstein Law LLC, North Highland Assembly of God, there's a resolution around the table to make payment to Dickstein Law, North Highland, 91,000.
All right, there's a motion second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved.
That's all, Mayor.
Any further business? All right, there's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.